Good evening, this is our November nineteenth monthly city council meeting. So, we'll go ahead and have a call to order and roll call.
Mayor Icarus here.
Councilor Phillips here.
Councilor Fendergrass here.
Councilor Richards here.
Councilor Dominique here.
Great, we have our agenda tonight. I have a couple of quick items to add. One is a, in our department committee reports under Parks and Trails. The item, um, human number seven.
Page disaster.
But, I'm sorry.
What page?
It's been on page four, under Parks and Trails. Under the action, I, a double I, a motion to approve Jeff O'Maguson to the Parks and Trails Committee. Parks and Trails would recommend his approval to join the Parks and Trails Committee.
Where's that going to fall, I you said?
Uh, double I under Parks and Trails, H on page four. And another item is under new business. Under, um, item number eight. Eight is that, uh, number is on page five of six. This would be, I guess it's at the top of page six. Item number six. Approve the recommendation for the outstanding citizen award.
Let me look under there.
Right before consent.
Just before the consent, gents?
Yes.
They've actually been paid six, right?
Yeah. No, six hundred. G, outstanding citizens award recommendation.
How do you help, where are you lettering that? What are you, what are you lettering that one as?
Um, G. G under new business, that's on page six. Item on G. Right before consent. G. Is that a making a motion? Any other changes? Seeing none, all those, make a motion to approve the amendment as amended.
Braylon.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Oh, you're, I'm sorry, you're under.
I was trying to finish there, I'm just checking. So the packet that I put on there, the information I put on there today with the memos and stuff, that'll be discussed under my section.
Uh, I want to make a comment about that, since it was not given to us, I believe the timestamp on that was three thirteen PM this afternoon, um, I would like to have that, uh, not put on the agenda tonight, just because there isn't enough time for us to go through it. Make that motion.
Okay. You made a motion?
Made a motion to have that, uh, held back and we can do it, uh, next month.
So, um, different than the outstanding, you might two suggestions of putting on, so I don't understand what's, uh,
It's, uh, it was, it was quite long and not enough time to go through there, so I weighed all that stuff, so now I want to, want to hold that back. So I make a motion to hold it back.
Second, uh, this is timely information stuff that needs to be addressed, though.
I think that there was a second over here, point of order for discussion.
Yeah, this is timely information that needs to be discussed. And the reason it took so long is because it was an evolving situation that took time to write everything up and have everything adequately prepared for council. So, this has to do with filling vacant positions, resignation of another employee. We're now going to have three vacant positions, as well as having to discuss, uh, filling those and then the board seats that need to be filled as well, and per city code, those need to be done in this, uh, this month, so.
Well, the, uh, the, uh, the board, the board fillings are done in this, in January.
Well, again, if you, in here I posted in the city ordinance that talks about they have to be posted in October and November for a time period for any open seats, so, and then they're filled in January, but they gotta have that time to have applications submitted for people who want to, to sit on any of the community boards that we have here.
There's a friendly motion, and I've already made on that, I make a motion that we have a special meeting. Um, let's say, uh, next Monday, uh, to be able to discuss that stuff for what's on there.
It's an all month.
Personnel didn't know anything about this.
This about personnel?
Personnel didn't know anything about the new positions, we didn't know anything about resignation. So personnel was sidestepped?
Not sidestepped, I was gathering information, putting stuff together, and it takes time to do it. And I, I had everything ready today.
So we're not blindsided.
So, I wasn't trying to blindside anybody, it was just a matter of fact, I was trying to gather everything and put it together in a professional manner, so.
So we have personnel committee, two motions on the table. Mr. Bruce, the agenda was amended, and we have a motion also to rescind one item from the city administrator's packing. So, first question is, uh, the motion regarding the packet from the city administrator. All those in favor of not, all those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. What is the motion, not allowed to, what was the motion?
There was an amendment.
It was a friendly amendment, yours is an amendment.
I was a friendly amendment to have it for a special meeting for, let's say, next Monday night.
Didn't hear a second to that motion.
I did.
You seconded it?
Yeah.
For the special meeting?
Yep.
Okay, that's what I didn't hear, I'm sorry. So, back up, let's take the motion for having a special meeting next Monday night. Review the city administrator, the packet information that was given to us late this afternoon. Is everybody available on Monday? Do you have the?
Fire Department, Fire Department.
What time is that?
Twenty fifth. That's six thirty.
I'd try to do it at like five.
Yeah, we can do it earlier, I mean, there's nothing else on Monday either, I don't have it on myself.
Five o'clock, Monday morning, Monday afternoon?
Yep.
Fine with me. All in favor of the special meeting next Monday night at five PM, that allows plenty of time to be posted for that special meeting, so, to review the administrator's packet that was given to us. This afternoon, so all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Pose. Motion approved. Most of the motion, yes. This amendment of, uh, the agenda with items that I mentioned.
Make a motion to approve that with their additions, Braylon.
Second then. Any other comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. That's approved, as amended. Next time it's a public forum, the three time, three minute time limit per person, the city council welcomes and encourages participation from community members. Please keep in mind that your comments are not the part of the city businesses and doesn't adhere to data privacy rules. No employees' names may be used, please do not expect action from the council this evening regarding your concerns. To address the city council during public forum, please step up to the podium, take, uh, take your name and address and fill out the form that's provided there, the speakers will be recognized only once. You will be timed, begin speaking when the green card is raised. The yellow card indicates you have thirty seconds left, and the red card indicates you have reached your three minute time, and we'll stop. So with that, I have a party from Steve Beckenner. Oh, I'm sorry, Linda, please go ahead.
Do you need answers?
Yes, my name is Linda Bando King. Um, my partners and myself are the owners of Gold Rush Crossing. It's been in excess of five months that we have been asking to annex and rezone our property. In my opinion, you are either stupid or corrupt, and I could be both. You have all kinds of excuses, but no goal. You already have the agreement with Orinoco Township. My question is, what's your holdup? I think we have documented is that there is a great deal of agreements made underhandedly. Different rules and perks for other folks, but not for Gold Rush Crossing. I guess you must be a member of the good old boys' club to qualify for that. All without the public or council members' knowledge or consent. Why are your books only open to view, not to the council members or to the public? The taxpayers and the council members have a right to know. Seems like there's a lot of under the table agreements. You tell us that we have to put in four ponds and easement for marking. Marking's not even within the city limits. You also told us we had to annex to the city of Orinoco to do our development. Again, another lie, that's not true. We are considering doing the same development in Orinoco Township, and we have visited with them. That would cut out your questionable crap, which I have had enough of. I don't like dealing with dishonesty or perceived corruption, and that's what we think we're dealing with. If you, as a council tonight, do not agree to a forensic audit, I will consider and my partners will going to the state of Minnesota with the information we have. You guys have a good evening and let me know.
Thank you.
Right? Steve Beckenner?
Hi, I'm Steve Beckenner, one 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 five, Riverdale Drive, Southwest. And, uh, and I just wanted to voice a concern with, uh, the new EG market that came to town, I think it's great to see and everything. But my concern is that, from a safety standpoint, I have like three grandkids on the other side over here, so I hear from them directly. That they love to bike over there, maybe walk over there, that, if they're candy bars or they want to get. But Minnesota Avenue, as you all know, is a very busy road, okay? And, you know, to try to cross that, and this, uh, street there is where they normally do it. You know, I ride my bike through town all the time, too, it's just not a safe intersection, you know, especially during rush hour. So I strongly recommend that we put, put a four way stop there, that'd be the most advantageous. You know, it would slow people down coming through town, and definitely make that a safe crossing for pedestrians. And if that can't be done, I, I'd recommend like we did at the post office years ago, that we put a pedestrian crossing and marking the, the street and had a little sign in the middle, so the cars and trucks going through can easily see that, you know, you need to look out for pedestrians and slow down and stop if anyone is there. Yeah. So I'd really appreciate you taking action on this in the future, because, you know, we all don't want anything terrible to happen, especially to our children, so. As a grandfather, I'm here to support it, so, thank you very much for your time.
Yep.
Thank you, Steve. Second call for public forums.
Hi, my name is Jeff Wongzness, my wife and I live, uh, at ninety-five Fifth Street, Southwest. And, uh, we're here to express our concerns about the variance, about our new garage at four thirty-five Minnesota, our property borders. Four thirty-five to the south, and, um, our neighbors are proposing to build a new garage, uh, which I am not against the garage. Um, the size of the garage seems to be kind of an issue, uh, maybe two by fifty-six is what we were told. We talked with Bill and Barb here this last weekend, and that just seems like more of a whole barn, possibly machine shed. And they're planning a new driveway, which will border our land. And that involves some tree trimming. And from what I understand, they want to take off half of our trees. Just lap off one side of the tree, which is not, not really acceptable to us. When they're done with the shed, the shed looks like it could be possibly twenty feet from our bedroom windows. And I guess they had talked about a wood, woodworking shop in there, which kind of concerns about noise. The, the survey of the property line, Barb said it's been done, but I don't know if it's legally done. Nobody knows where the property line is for sure. And the setback there kind of concerns us. We really didn't know about this, this destruction until us, we received the variance notice in the mail. And that, uh, that was the first we really heard, but we didn't know the size of the leaning or the new driveway or anything like that, so we're just a little concerned about the size again and the location. And that, yeah, like, uh, ask the council to take that under consideration before they vote on this.
Did you fill out the?
No, I didn't.
I can just get you to fill out, and we've never, nothing that I appreciate.
I get it done.
Line button nine forty, Woodlands Lane, Southeast. Um, and when looking through the packet for tonight, uh, under the department and committee section G, you're going to be talking about a thirty-two hundred dollar contract with CETA. Um, when looking further into that in page fifty-six of the council packet, if you look at it, it says this thirty-two hundred dollars goes for someone to be, um, for an average of eight hours per week. If you do the math of that, that's eight hours times fifty-two weeks a year, that's four hundred and sixteen hours. Divide the thirty-two thousand one hundred and thirty-seven dollars by the four hundred and sixteen hours, that's seventy-seven dollars and twenty-five cents per hour that we would be paying for that type of support. Um, I would question, um, are we really getting, one, first, eight hours of support from our current CETA member today? I don't know that, it's not transparent, so I would hope the council would ask that question and, and for getting that support. Two, have we, um, as we are looking at tax increases and budget cuts, is this the most pertinent thirty-two hun, thirty-two thousand dollars that we're going to spend? Should we be not supporting maybe our fire department or third responders or others with those funds? Um, three, have we actually seen outcomes that have, we've recouped our thirty-two thousand dollars uh, before, that, that was the previous rate of, or whatever rate it was previously? I'll add another point here, um, if you look at the, uh, page sixty-seven of the seven twenty-five, two thousand twenty-four special council meeting packet, the CETA, the CETA individual sent a letter in, was that approved by the EDA, or was that on, uh, her own, um, accord, and so, as an employee? Is that, was that supposed to happen or not? My understanding, the CETA representative also spoke on behalf of the EDA without approval during the special, uh, the, um, the meeting that you can find on seven sixteen at the city council meeting at one hour and seven minutes. She used language such as not my backyard mentality, local government, your neighbors get to determine what you as a resident can or cannot do with your own property. This is not what anyone would want, um, exactly what will happen. So I ask you today, if that's the mentality of who we have representing us from CETA, can I put any garage, shed, barn on my property? Can I pour oil in the back of my property that would then get leach into the, into, um, into the river? No, there are laws, there are regulations, there's planning and zoning. So if our CETA representative is going to have that type of mentality, or do we have the right person in place? Finally, I would say this as well, on five, if you look at your city council agendas, five twenty-one, six eighteen, seven sixteen, and nine seventeen, there was no additional report from CETA or from our EDA, I should say. Um, so what are we getting for the thirty-two thousand dollars? That is my question to the council, and as you discuss that later tonight, please make sure we're using our tax money life. Thank you.
Braylon.
Thank you.
Braylon. Thank you. Third and final call for public forum.
Joy Berzinger, six hundred Sixth Street, Southwest in Orinoco. Um, I wasn't going to speak, but I just wanted to speak, uh, to you just a little bit about what age-friendly Orinoco uh, has been working with the EDA to try to get an eighty thousand dollar grant for the city. Part of that would be for a park assessment, housing assessment for the seniors, uh, trying to revi, revitalize the seniors group, trying to get a speaker system that we could use portable, so that we wouldn't need to rely on the city giving us permission to use any equipment. Um, trying to think what other things, but it's an eighty thousand dollar grant. So just to speak to you, and to the council, too, that we do appreciate that. We're a small group, there's no way we could have applied for that without her help, so, thank you.
Anybody else?
Uh, Annie Johnson, four thirty-five River Park Road, Southeast. Um, I too wasn't going to speak tonight, but after the first thirty seconds of us all coming together, I feel like I need to give a public thank you to our city administrator and our city staff for working as hard as they do against the constant barriers that are thrown up to them to do their jobs. Um, we all just saw it here again. Um, about taxpayer, being responsible for taxpayer money, holding special meetings is not free. So they come together on Monday, they have to be paid to be here, so that costs money. So instead of working together like adults and listening to each other and using the hard work of our city administrator who has put in his hard work and using our taxpayer dollars that help pay his salary in a responsible way, you force a special meeting because you refuse to be an adult in the room. We see this over and over and over again. I'm glad there's this many people here tonight to see this, you'll see it again tonight, if you stick around for the meeting, you'll see it. There's certainly agenda items on here that these guys are prepared to fight our city administrator vote. And another note, personnel committee is obsolete, there's no need for a personnel committee. That was created historically here when we did not have a city administrator. You can laugh at me, that's fine. But historically, the only reason we had a personnel committee is because we did not have a city administrator. We now have a city administrator who in any other well-functioning city is the personnel committee. You can watch over and over again, these guys deny our city administrator's hard work when he tried to find a financial manager for the city. He had seventeen applicants, he interviewed eight people, and these guys told him to go out and get more applicants. Seventeen for the city of Orinoco. And they shot it down. Again, I'm glad there's this many people here tonight to see this, of what you guys do over and over again. It's not free when they do this. They're not being adults in the room. Let our city administrator do his job, that we at least appreciate the work that he's doing.
Third and final call?
Uh, Morgan Kuchar, twelve forty Cedar Drive. Um, just in response to Joy, what you had shared, that's great, that the CETA representative was able to help you with that eighty thousand dollar grant that you're working on. Again, the, the feedback hasn't been transparent, so we have no idea what's been worked on. My husband's been to, I think, every meeting since June, and there's nothing to report, there's no agenda items that she's given. So again, just wondering what the taxpayer money is going towards. Also, too, um, just an addition, maybe we could reach out to her as needed for advisory from time to time versus the thirty-two thousand year contract. That's it. Thank you.
Anybody else want to speak, public forum? Third and final call. Seeing that, we'll close. Public forum at six fifty-five. Thanks for the comments. First item on our agenda is our Olmsted County Sheriff, I don't see the gentleman here, but there is a report in your packet. Next item is a, um, renewal of the prosecution services agreement with the county of Olmsted, it's required for the years twenty-five, twenty twenty-five, please. Six, to allow the Olmsted County Attorney's Office to continue to handle prosecution of criminal offenses occurring within the city of Oregon. So I make a motion to approve the renewal of the prosecution, prosecution services agreement with the Olmsted County.
I'll second that.
Now I do, now I do have one question. If we didn't use Olmsted County, who would we use? Okay.
No answer.
Well, I do that work, but it would cost you way more to hire our firm, if they pretty much underbid any law firm.
I, I understand that, we have, we're talking about prosecution of criminal stuff, it's kind of like, well, some of the prosecutors in the county, why would you go to anyplace else?
Well, other cities, I think, do hire private law firms, like in Winona, Labusha, pretty much every county. But I would recommend you use the county and not hire us or hire a different press, private prosecutor, just because I think you get a better, you know, they're willing to do that, so what's happened to a lot of counties is they, there's, they're down so many attorneys that the county attorney's offices are really hurting for staff, and they're not willing to do it anymore for certain cities. And then the cities are stuck, um, and that's why we prosecuted some for the city of Little Falls, which is three hours from our St. Paul office, because the county won't do it. So you're lucky that they're willing to do it, and you should just hire them.
Thanks for your clarification, I had no idea that outside firms handle prosecution.
Oh, sure, sure, yeah, and that's, I'm the city prosecutor for New Almond, Winona, I mean, it's a real problem, the lack of lawyers in rural Minnesota is a real problem um, that a lot of counties are facing, so. Um, Olmsted seems to be pretty well-staffed, but they're a bigger, you know, like, uh, Mauer County, the Grover Lee, as they were down attorneys, I mean, they had a case backlog that was unbelievable, because they couldn't staff, they tried to hire and they couldn't hire anybody. So, yeah, but I think they charge pretty reasonable, the only thing they don't do in that contract is they don't do ordinance prosecution. So that's, if you read that contract, it's carved out, and that, that has occasionally been an issue here, but, you know, that's just what it is, I mean, that's what they're willing to do, so.
Thanks, Mike.
Any other comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Through. Public works. Packet was a bid for the, um, that was open for the city moor. More than something would have gotten in the bay, in your stuff. Yesterday. Had they got this?
Yep.
We received a bid. Uh, we had a minimum bid, said sixty-five hundred, and we received a bid for seven thousand, six hundred and thirty-seven dollars, so.
Very good.
You look great.
I'll make a motion to approve it. Thank you, I'll second.
Any other comments to add, Kane? No. All in favor of accepting the bids, bid, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Through. Water and Sewer. Quick update, one of our committee members, Larry Stolt, has retired from the Water and Sewer Committee, he's been on since nineteen sixty-five, and we appreciate his time, part of that time he was on council for a couple of years as well, but he brought a lot to the committee of history, and we all appreciate. he brought a lot to the committee of history and we all appreciated his add-on committee. So we're very very appreciative of his efforts and his time. So with that, we have an open position in the committee. And we'll be posting that here very shortly to, for a person to replace that position for, so we have a seven-member committee. Next item is a change order number five. And Joe, if you'd like to speak to that briefly.
Yeah, we did review the change order with Water and Sewer and actually we've been kind of talking about these items with council over the last five, six months probably. Two items in the change order. The first one deals with some waste activated sledge pumps. These pumps were supplied as part of the S B R facility at the wastewater treatment facility. At the startup, we discovered that the pumps were undersized. So talking with the supplier, it was determined that they needed to upgrade those pumps. And so really what's happening with this item is they are upgrading those four existing pumps to a pump that'll function at all head conditions that the S B R is exposed to and, and meet the requirement there. So the second item deals with the lab testing equipment. You remember that people's came in and asked if they could purchase a specific type of laboratory equipment, testing equipment that would allow them to test for both nitrogen and phosphorus within the raw water. The equipment that we ultimately did purchase, because you guys authorized it, is they, the operator does have that and it allows them to test wastewater kind of in real time rather than send it out to a lab and then wait a week to get it back. So they can make incremental adjustments in the process very efficiently. And so that was added to that. And in fact, we had an allowance within the contract for lab equipment, but that purchase put us over the allowance. We need to have a change order item to increase that allowance amount to allow us to pay the contractor. And so really what that, that's what the change order is for. So we have item A for the waste activated sledge pumps. That total cost is about seventeen thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. And then we had the lab testing equipment allowance addition. And that cost was about ninety-five hundred and eighteen dollars. So the total cost of the change order is twenty-six thousand eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars. That increases. This is the fifth change order for the project and will be the last change order. The total amount of the change order is about two hundred and twenty-six thousand, almost two hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. It's summarized in the back. But it increases the contract amount to twenty million eight hundred and ninety-four thousand, twenty-four dollars. This will allow us to essentially pay the contractor for those expenses as that, that work is.
We'll get twenty million number, did you?
The original contract amount is twenty million six hundred and sixty-seven thousand plus the two hundred and twenty-seven thousand. It's twenty million eight hundred and eighty, ninety-four thousand and twenty-four dollars. It's on the second page of the change order. Summarized there. So you didn't write it down. It's all on the, on the document. Questions on the, on the changer?
Do you get any money back from the other pumps like there were that were undersized?
They do. They actually self-disposed them. They take them back. So they are retaining the old pumps and supplying the upgraded pumps. And so that's really what we're paying for. Yep. They're, they're very good about it. In fact, I was pleased that they were fair.
So I make a, any other comments? Questions for Joe? With that, I make a motion. We approve change order number five.
Second.
About the sixty-eight dollars.
I'll second that.
All seconds. Any other comments? Seeing none. All is in favor. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The next item is a, a letter that was sent from People's Service. For myself, it's in your packet regarding consumer price index, which in, which affects our chemical costs, I guess it is, compensation for contract being increased from eight hundred, eighteen thousand, seven, seventeen dollars to nineteen thousand, three seventy-two. That's a monthly compensation. And the base amount of chemicals being increased from sixteen thousand, seventy dollars to sixteen thousand, six hundred and thirty-two dollars. So that's always written into the contract that we signed a year ago. It was during the spring.
Yeah, ninety-nine months ago. Yeah.
Do we have a show of what the chemicals were so far that we've used on that this past year?
Uh, Peoples does report that on a monthly basis. Yep.
Now you see the increase. I just had not seen that on what, what it is on a monthly basis.
I don't, I don't have that in front of me, Joe, but I know they send it to the city every week, every once a month.
So with that, I make a motion. We approve People's Services. Twenty twenty-five C P I, new increase of two and a half percent.
I'll second it.
Any other comments? We do, it's for the public. So we do get monthly reports to our Water and Sewer Committee. That's all part of our minutes. All in favor, seeing if I'm just saying aye.
Aye.
Ours.
Is that where those, is that where those numbers are related to the this, this monthly cost to the city for chemicals that come to, coming to the Water and Sewer Committee meetings? Is that where that's coming in at?
No, I believe those builders sent, like invoice, they're sent to the city also.
I guess that would be called C M R. Maybe that's why I see a stand tech bill.
What do they look like? I don't know. I know exactly what you're talking about. There's their chemical usage.
Yeah, they, they basically have an allowance for chemical usage. And so as part of the contract, if they you know, exceed if their chemical usage exceeds their allowance, then they basically have a true up function within the contract that they tell the city what the additional costs are and grew up at the end of the year.
But if they're not, they're not sending a report of how much they actually used each month, or are they?
I think their, their report does talk about, you know, the test results and the chemical usage and where they are in their maintenance budget and that type of thing.
Well, I've never seen that off the pole. Yes, I don't, I don't recall C either.
Kane, I think probably has them too. He can help you.
Oh, hey, Kane. Thanks, Kane.
Thanks, Kane. Just an update. Our city staff is working on finalizing the assessments with the sewer system improvement in the River Bend Estates subdivision with the county auditor's office. So it's in process. Next item is planning and zoning. Update on W S B steering.
Yeah, briefly, we had another steering meeting that took place just before the planning and zoning meeting last week. Going through, we were looking at different evaluations of lot sizes, especially in the R one area and just coming with comparisons that there are with other communities. And so it was just an open discussion of what we had. There's a lot more to be discussed. We go from R one to R two, V one, V two, and some other other special codes that could be put in there. So it's a work in progress, but definitely working our way through and having a discussion. It was, it was well-attended, which is great, you know, so. Next meeting is next month and it's going to be an hour before we have the planning and zoning meeting for the steering committee meeting and that's also on Zoom as well.
Next item is our public hearing number one regarding four fifteen Minnesota Avenue South regarding a variance.
Go ahead. Okay. Yeah, and, and it was interesting listening here to Jeff. He should have been notified of the public hearing that there was for planning and zoning and he wasn't there for that, that date that there was.
Actually, actually, they were here and they, they left a little bit early.
Oh, they did? Okay, same good.
They were here that night.
Take his weight.
Yeah, after it was stated that a garage was planned, they went up.
Okay.
Yeah, his wife's full.
All right. No, I'm just, you know, because I was just wanting to make sure. But anyway, we turned around and we took a look at the conditions that there were for approval of the or the locations. I have that correct. Four fifteen Minnesota Avenue South. And it was for an accessory building that we had. And originally the building was going to be larger and they had downsized it to fit under what our, our code called for. So the conditions for approval, and this was after they did a revised footage for that to be seventeen hundred ninety-two square foot garage. The condition for approval, one is the existing four hundred and eighty square foot garage on site will be removed within one year after the issuance of a building permit for the new garage. And we looked at that also to possibly extend that to when the completion of the new garage was there for them to remove the old garage. And so the finding of fact is Barbara Shane owns residential property in, in four fifteen Minnesota Avenue South in Orinoco, zone R one. The property is point nine six six acres in size. The city of Orinoco zoning code standards allows accessory building to total five percent of the lot area for which a property of four fifteen Minnesota Avenue South yields two thousand one hundred and three square feet of allowable area without a variance. Orinoco's number three, the Orinoco zoning code standards allows up to two accessory buildings per lot. Number four, the structure on the property consisting of a house, detached garage and a garden shed. The square footage of the existing accessory structures, the garage, the shed is seven hundred and forty square feet. The applicant proposes to construct a new garage of one thousand seven hundred and ninety-two square feet resulting in two thousand five hundred and thirty-two square feet while the three accessory buildings are still standing. The applicant proposes to demolish the older garage after the new garage resulting in two thousand fifty-two square feet of accessory structures once the existing garage is removed. Number five is reasonable to allow for the third accessory building, the existing garage to remain on site until the new garage is available to move the contents from the existing garage and then allow the total square footage of the accessories building to exceed the audience maximum during that period. Such arrangement would be altered would alter the essential character of the area and limited to one time when the property would be in compliance against once the existing garage is removed. Number six, there are practical difficulties in admitting the code if the existing garage and its contents must be removed before the garage is available. And number seven, the request to keep the third accessory building on the property for that limited time period not to exceed the area of the maximum during that time meets the standards of approval for variance in section one five one point four oh one of the Orinoco zoning code. So that's what we had for the approval of that. And so we had a unanimous vote from planning and zoning for the approval of the variant.
Make a motion.
Go ahead, make a motion to approve the variance.
I'll second.
During your discussions with the location, I understand it has to be on the south side of the house because of the right-of-way for the street that's on the north side of the property. So that location was picked versus further back in the, further back in the lot, I guess, or something.
That's right, what's presented. So does the where, where the existing existing structure is going to come down. Is that in the way for where it could be to?
Yeah, it's on the other.
Jeff, Jeff explained a little earlier that he was concerned about setbacks. So I just wondered if the garage where it's, the existing garage that's there that's forcing, forcing the building to be back in a different location on the property where it couldn't, where setbacks could be changed.
Could it be where the old garage is?
Yeah, exactly. So it's kind of like.
Their issue with that is they have their old garage full of things and they want to build it away from that. So once that's done, then they can move everything from the old garage. And I know we, we did allow that. Actually.
Next door to where it was.
Right next door.
It was a terrible place. I get that.
I, I mean, that's a good question. And, and I can see the point too. If that was located in the other location where the existing garage is, it would not be a nuisance that way for noise or, or other issues that there are, which is something to, to take into consideration. In which case I, I could see that being a, a good point. So again, it was, it wasn't presented that way because we were looking at keeping the existing garage. You know, if, if, if we want to send it back again, I think we have time to send it back to P and Z and look at it that way for the, the difference would be, you know, to have the other one removed and then move all the, the, the stuff out. There are places to put their cars or whatever in the meantime, would, would be the other the way to take a look at it. I'm just looking for the date on this.
Can I make a comment?
Well, I would guess.
Part of the reason that we were moving it to the other side was because of that street access that is slated on the north side of the, of the property. And to build there with the slopedage and everything was too impossible.
What's street access? I'm not familiar with.
Or driveway.
Oh, new drive.
If you look at page twenty-two of one forty-six, you'll see what Kathy's referring to. The driveway is right now is in, from the city right-of-way lateral. It's
So they need to go.
It's all the, the new building behind the current garage. It's very sloping and somewhat cost prohibitive to do it there. So it's probably the flattest place on the lot, on the lot itself.
I think the driveway location. I was just going to say, I, I'd looked at the driveway. I was asked to look at the driveway. The driveway location as it exists is near the crest of the hill. And there were some safety concerns cited by the resident. The proposed location is farther south and has better site characteristics.
No, which I can see makes sense. Anyway, that was a P and Z, you know, recommendation was, was to approve that after we looked at everything that there was when we went through P and Z.
So how far is this going to be off the lot line? It's going to be?
The setback is a ten-foot.
I think it means setbacks.
Needs a setback.
It was from what Phil had to say. So. You have any comments on, on that one, Joe?
As far as I know, it meets the setbacks. Yeah.
It does.
Yeah.
If it didn't, we'd have to state that.
Well, I'm sure that Phil would have brought that up.
Yeah.
Yeah. I gotta think, I mean, they, their application doesn't ask for the variance from the setback. So I can see how if you didn't have Phil, that you would just look at this one request, the lot, this, the square footage request. But I gotta think Phil would look at that if it was built.
Right.
Right on the lot line, he's going to say something, right? Right on the lot line, he's going to say something, right?
There was a certificate of survey completed and the pins are out there. I saw it myself.
There was nothing brought up that it didn't mean.
Yeah, you're right on that one.
And I think, I thought we discussed that.
The whole issue is the aesthetics that it's going to create.
And that is, there was a description or picture for the, the Clary Building. You got a chance to take a look at it, too.
I can see that.
It's on page twenty-five.
I'll follow the sidewalk. Yes, I really don't think that calls. The twelve foot?
Any other comments? Saying done, let's call for the votes.
Do a voice vote for it.
What's that?
Voice vote for it.
Voice vote, yes. Mayor, I agree. Aye.
Councilman Phillips.
Aye.
Councilman Richards.
Aye.
Councilman Penigras.
No.
And Councilman.
Aye.
That's approved. Next item is our public hearing for twelve fifteen West Center Street. Lot split postponed from October. Package. Resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirty-seven.
Go ahead. You can take him. And this is for the lot split at, excuse me, twelve fifteen West Center Street. And this is for the estate of Randall Wells Barnes. And Kirk is asking for the split to be done in two parcels. Parcel one will be about ten point five acres in size. Parcel two will be four point nine acres in size. Orinoco zoning code, one five one point oh oh two sets forth the procedure for the lot split. And Orinoco zoning code, section one five one point one one nine sets forth the minimum required street frontage of fifty feet for each single family lot. Parcel one of the proposed lot split would have a street frontage on First Street of sixteen point five feet, whereas the Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed the request or the testimony in a public hearing in its meeting on October tenth, twenty twenty-four, whereas the Orinoco City Council reviewed the request in the meeting of November nineteenth, twenty-four. And therefore, it was resolved that the City Council, the City of Orinoco approves the lot split at twelve fifteen West Center Street with the following conditions and finding of facts. Conditions for approval for the lot split. The recorded survey for the lot split shall show, and you have twenty feet here, we had agreed again at planning and zoning, it was ten feet, city drainage and utility easement on the east side of the property. Once received by the city, the approval by the city engineer and the legal description shall be attached to the resolution as exhibit A, I believe that's been done, and submitted to the city. And the survey shall be attached to this resolution as exhibit B. The resolution shall be recorded with the Homestead County Registered Office. If the resolution is not recorded within six months of the date of the approval, the resolution shall be null and void and no further force or effect. Number two, the lot split is only approved if a variance for the lot frontage for parcel one is also approved. Finding of facts. Number one, Kirk Barnes is handling the state for Randall Wells Barnes, owner of the property at twelve fifteen West Center Street, Orinoco, Minnesota. Number two, the applicant has requested a lot split of the property divided into two parcels. In parcel one, about ten point five acres in size, and parcel two, about four point nine acres in size, as described in the legal description. Exhibit A attached and inflicted on the survey, exhibit B attached. Number three, the Orinoco zoning code, section one five one point oh oh two sets forth the procedure for the lot split. Number four, the Orinoco zoning code, section one five one point one one nine sets forth the minimum required street frontage of fifty feet for a single lot. Parcel one, the proposed lot split, would have a frontage road on First Street Northwest of sixteen point five feet requiring a variance of the zoning code provisions in section one five one 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 nine. The proposed lot split meets the standard, section one five one point oh oh two for approval of the lot split. And the lot, uh, frontage variance for parcel one is approved. So I, I make a motion to approve this.
Second.
Discussion? I've got a couple of concerns. This resolution that you have in front of us that we are devoted on does not have exhibit A or exhibit B. And if you look at our code, one fifteen, one fifty-one point oh oh two, which was mentioned several times in the resolution, and it's also mentioned in Phil's letters and comments, it's supposed to be attached, part of the application that the city receives. And I think that, I have, there's three other lot splits that we've done recently. There's one back in twenty twenty for Pine Island Sound Investments. And in that resolution that we signed, there was a legal description and there was a certificate of survey attached to that resolution. When we, and those were then recorded. The next item was a lot split just recently, December of last year, at four fifty-second Avenue North West. That also had a legal description and a survey, and that was attached. We've also had another one earlier this year at four oh five Second Avenue Northeast. The resolution had the survey, certificate, and a legal description, and that was all approved at one, at the one meeting, and it was sent out to be recorded. And I just feel like this is, it's setting a bad precedent by approving this resolution tonight with no certificates and no surveys. Yes, we do have a contingent in it within six months, but I just feel like that's really setting a bad precedent for future lot splits.
It was, it was submitted.
Yes. I submitted it last Tuesday.
Okay, so in our packet, it shows the one as the ten foot right away, at least. It doesn't show twelve foot.
We agreed on ten foot.
Yeah, we agreed on ten foot in P and Z.
We agreed with ten foot. That's what I had Johnson Schofield include in his description.
So the resolution shows twenty feet.
So that needs to be corrected.
You just corrected it, and I made it, right? I said ten, which is what the planning and zoning went with, ten.
And it was ten, we, I agreed on ten feet in the last city council meeting, too, at that, as long as we, I mean, we talked about the twenty feet, but we agreed that ten feet would be sufficient, and then I would include that in there. So I have, this is not surveyed and.
If, if the documents need to be corrected with that, okay, then what we can do, I still would think we have time on this to be able to put that in, maybe next one's packet? Have everything with, no?
No, I, we're kicking this around.
I guess I provided everything.
Yeah, the landowner provided it. If this is wrong, I think we approve it with the change. And they're done, because everything else is submitted as ten foot, is what you're saying.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, it's been approved by the county zoning, it's been.
This is not the landowner's fault.
Did the planning and zoning have the survey when they, does that make sense?
No, because he had already said it was sent in, and so we didn't have it with us when we went through this. But he had submitted it to the city, which was, so, which was a request that we had.
Well, he had to submit it to the city or, or Phil wouldn't have known the lot lines and stuff, how to, how to split it. How, how to email, how to split that if you didn't have that. Jason, that's correct. I handed it to you on last Tuesday.
Yeah, you came in, I.
And I know it wasn't ten days, but we're going to try and get it to Phil as soon as possible.
Yeah, and I know we got.
For it to be reviewed.
All that stuff brought in, too.
I've got a copy of the document.
So the legal description, I didn't see anywhere in our packet. I missed it. I saw, there's the certificate. The certificate was, I think, part of P and Z, but it wasn't. It was, clearly wasn't included with the resolution. That's why I'm kind of piecemeal approach here to this resolution. I just think that's, it's not a very thorough and complete resolution, I guess is what I'm saying, it's just setting a bad precedent.
Because if it was submitted and he had it in here, that's not setting a precedent because it was already done. You know, if it wasn't included, that's where it was at in the city, but he had already submitted it to the city.
So is the resolution written incorrectly if everything's submitted? We don't need six months for it.
No.
Thirty-six, six. So the certificate of survey is in the packet, it's on page thirty-six, the legal description's on page thirty-seven. I think the survey is dated November twelfth.
Oh, yeah, it's all in there, so. So, yeah. So it just should be attached to the resolution because you got to record in the resolution. This is what I brought up at the last meeting, like, you really should, for future reference, if you ever get a lot split application that doesn't, that doesn't include a survey and a legal, you should reject it until the applicant cannot move forward on it, until they provide it at the time the application. So we addressed this at the last one's council meeting and there wasn't a survey. So the council continued it to today's meeting. It looks like they do have a survey. Like, you have a legal description. I just don't know if it's, you know, it'd be nice if Phil would have reviewed it and then attached it to the resolution so that we know that if they, they match, I guess.
And what Jim was saying is that.
It's fine. I mean, if you're comfortable that that's accurate, the accurate survey and the accurate legal description, and you want to approve it, you should just amend the resolution, you know, to make those attachments to the resolution. Because honestly, like, when it goes to the county, I don't know how that works if it's not attached to the resolution. They have to create a parcel ID for these parcels. I don't know if they can even do that, you know, unless there's something from the city. I mean, we did one once in Goodview where it was a hundred and thirty-year-old parcel that never got a legal description. They made a mistake, and so they did it in that instance, but I, I guess.
Well, from what I understand, well, Jim read is, if they don't record it within six months, it was null and void. That would be the.
Right, but if you have the resolution without, if you try and record the resolution, record the resol, resolution without a legal description, they're not going to record it. You need a legal description to record it.
Understood.
So it's always got to be attached to the, and I guess I don't, I mean, I don't have any problem if you're comfortable that that's the correct legal description, you're comfortable that that's the correct survey, then, you know, I just think you, you should make a motion to attach it to the resolution or to redo the resolution to create the correct number of feet. Apparently, there's a problem with that, and then to attach those as exhibits.
Make amendment to your motion.
Yeah, I'll make a friendly amendment to the motion to make the correction from twenty to ten feet, and also to attach the three pages that we have that were in our packet, page thirty-six, thirty-seven, and thirty-eight, to go along with the resolution, make it complete.
The first problem with it, if he goes to the county and they won't record it, then you're going to have to redo it, I guess. So it's on you that it's correct. You think it's correct?
I know it's correct, yes. I heard Johnson Schofield for both surveys, the original survey with the firm lawyers, and then he came back and did the split survey and put a pin there, marker down on that center of First Street, so. That's all been done and recorded. Enter. And he was going to submit that to the county.
So what, may I ask, the legal description, if we through the pages thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, that's just a survey, but you're saying the legal description will take some more time? That's, that's what's going to be missing when it goes to the county.
No, no, it's there.
It has to be put in there. What they're saying is this is, that you have it, it's just not referenced as like exhibit A and exhibit B to the resolution.
We just make, need to make that.
It's like a Skritners error is what they're saying, I think. So I think that's, as long as you're comfortable that this is correct.
Well, a lot of, a lot of the wording for the descriptions on page thirty-seven is part A, part B, it's in there.
Right.
Tell there, that just the references.
Yeah, it's not incorporated by reference. Because that's what they need. I mean, they need to know what the council approved and then what land they approved it for, you know, where is the.
So we just need to add this to the.
Resolution.
You second it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I've seconded it. So let's, could you just restate the motion?
Uh, the, the new motion or revised motion that I had up for that was to turn around and, and make a motion for approval, changing the description from twenty feet to ten feet that we have in writing and to attach pages thirty-six, thirty-seven, and thirty-eight in our council packet to be attached to what goes to the county for approval.
So is there an actual resolution or is it just a staff report?
It's twenty twenty-four dash thirty-seven. What package you got today?
What page in the package is that?
I don't think it had a page number because there was an addition to it.
Oh, some relation. I see, that's why I didn't. I'm confused. All right. It's fine, as long as there's a resol, like, a document, a resolution somewhere and you're comfortable with it.
Yeah, what pages did you say?
It's going to be thirty-six, thirty-seven, and then thirty-eight.
All right, any other comments? So the clarification. Saying done, just do a voice vote. Mayor, of course. Aye.
Councilman Bill.
Aye.
Councilman Richards.
Aye.
Councilman Penigras.
Aye.
Councilman DeBlomick.
Aye.
Twenty twenty-four dash forty-six, this is for the variance, twelve fifteen West Center Street. Regarding the fifty foot.
Yeah, this will go back. Okay, this would be resolution twenty twenty-four forty-six. You want me to read the whole? But again, I can, but basically, looking at the resolution part of it, it's the City Council, City of Orinoco, Minnesota approves a variance for lot frontage requirement for parcel one of the lot split at twelve fifteen West Center Street with the findings of fact. Number one, the Randall Wells Barnes estate owns a property at twenty fifteen West Center Street in Orinoco in R1 zoning district. Number two, the applicant Kirk Barnes requests to have a lot split to create two lots with sixteen point five feet of frontage on First Street Northwest. Number three, the Orinoco zoning code in section one five one point one one nine requires fifty feet of lot frontage for each single family lot. Number four, the applicant has applied for a variance of the above lot frontage requirement to allow for the two lots in the split lot each having sixteen point five feet of frontage on First Street Northwest. Number five, the unique condition to the property that justify allowing access with limited frontage on First Street Northwest. The property is large for a residential lot and more or less regular in shape. A unique feature is that the stub of the First Street Northwest is only thirty-three feet wide, not enough to give a new lot the required fifty-foot frontage, let alone two lots. The parcel is narrower east and west than it is. let alone two lots. The parcel is narrower east and west than it is tall north to south, suggesting that the lot split makes more sense to have it proposed at the First Street Northwest versus splitting at the Center Street frontage. Number six, the narrow row of First Street Northwest abutting to the east edge of the property is a unique feature that the landlord did not create. Number seven, uh splitting the property as proposed at First Street Northwest makes it makes more sense than dividing the Center Street frontage into two narrower tall lots. Number eight, the proposed lot split and variance would not be detrimental to the public welfare welfare for other properties and would not alter the character of the area. Number eight, the request is in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning code, but not the specific lot frontage standard. And number ten, there is no specific reference to the lot frontage in the comp plan. And number eleven, the variance request meets the conditions for approving a variance in section one-five-one-point-four-zero-one of the Orinoco zoning code. So I make a motion to approve uh resolution number twenty twenty-four dash forty-six, and I think we should probably attach those pages thirty-six, thirty-seven, and thirty-eight along with this as well.
I'll second.
Any other comments regarding that this motion? I think that's a nice change from the uh October meeting about the calls act being mentioned in Phil's report. What can possibly be done in the future? Any other comments? Seeing none, let's do the voice vote.
Mayor, of course.
Hi.
Councilor Phillips.
Hi.
Councilor Richards.
Hi.
Councilor Penegras.
Hi.
Councilor DeBlomnik.
Hi.
Next item is fire department. Is anybody here from Dan or? Okay, thanks, Dan. Um. Now, once you come out of court, you're gonna kind of explain the updates. There's a memo, page forty-seven of one forty-six that Dan had submitted. Comments? Talking about the different items here on our agenda.
Just to summarize it quick.
Yep, you want to? And um now the uh the update on the three quotes, I guess, is that are you expecting action tonight or just the updates?
Oh, let's discuss. Absolutely. Yeah, with the the quick overview. So mayor, council, administrator, so we uh tried to get that Elster County grant that would give us a new compressor and new packs. Uh, we were going with multi-agencies. We did not get it. So that was our hope that we could get all that equipment replaced. What we did not appreciate is over the last few months, uh the compressor that we have, which is the compressor fills air bottles, which we use to fill the bottles that we wear that died. We had been repairing it and maintaining it. Uh, I got both the packs and the and the compressor that we had back in the oh-eight, oh-nine timeframe with a grant. So that's how we got those the first case, but compressor has died now. And so the little letter was saying, you know, that's probably the most critical right now is we have a compressor that can't fill our bottles. Last night, we were training at the Regional Train Center and we had to go to Rochester Fire to fill all these air bottles that were prepared if we had a call. So the first little part was we would like to, we got quotes to buy a whole system, which we don't need. We just need the compressor. We got a quote for refurbished for like fourteen thousand and then we got a quote for a brand new compressor, which was seventeen. Plus installation is probably around twenty thousand. So that we would like to pursue getting uh that replaced. We had twenty-three, twenty-four thousand dollars as kind of earmarked for this grant that we did not get. So we'd like to use that money to pay for this compressor, which is kind of a kind of urgent need. So that's kind of the first ask or, you know, request for consideration. Then the second thing was our packs. We, the bottles have a fifteen-year life. We knew we'd have to get new bottles. Even if we didn't get the grant, we thought we could keep our packs, but just replace the bottles. We have since since found out that the company that we bought our packs from, a company called Sperryan, got bought by Honeywell. Honeywell still decided that they no longer want to be in this business. So they're no longer going to maintain this NIOSH certification. So it kind of puts us in a pickle that I got a pack that won't have current uh NIOSH certifications. And so for me, it's kind of more of a a problem of if I had a firefighter use a pack, or the pack had an issue, somebody got hurt, could somebody go after us, say, hey, you normally are using a pack that has an expired invalid, you know, NIOSH certification? So again, I was not expecting that at all. That was very frustrating. So we're kind of now in a point where we got a huge expense now to replace packs and bottles. And so we got some quotes uh that the the resolution that you have next for this joint powers, it's kind of like we do with our truck. Remember back Ryland, we got, we joined this buying consortium. So we get pre-bid pricing so that the Scott packs that we get, that I I showed you the quote, I think we had the quote was sort of twenty-five, but you can do the math for uh whatever we're gonna have. It's pre-bid quote, so that would be what it is. But since this was not a budget expense, this is not a planned expense, you know, between the charitable gambling that we do between the city budget, we just weren't ready for this big expense. So we need to figure out, how can we do this? We we got some rental packs that we're gonna put in service shortly that will get us by for a little bit, but we need to have a plan. So I'd say the compressor is probably the first thing. We'd like to get that, figure out how to pay for that, get that out of order so we can get that, because that's really, you know, uh it's it's hard for us to use air bottles and then have to go to Rochester every time uh to fill them. And the packs.
How much time is left on the bottles?
They're done. I mentioned, we got the grant in the oh-eight, oh-nine timeframe, fifteen years later, which is this year. So that's why we were really hoping to get that that grant with the with the rest of the other counties so that we could, you know, get new bottles. We're also, we're hopeful to get packs that are standardized between the county. Uh, we have this Honeywell, other people have Scott, so we we were gonna have the benefit of also having the same pack, but I was planning if I didn't get the grant, I would keep my packs and just buy new bottles, but now I don't have that as an option.
So um on the second page, you list twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, and.
Yeah, so that was just.
Association.
That was just a a proposal, a suggestion, uh let's work together of how do I pay for over a hundred thousand dollars for the equipment without having over a hundred thousand dollars? So this was just an idea. You know, you guys are smart. Maybe you have some other idea of where we can get funds. You know, we have our gambling funds. But we don't, nobody has enough to buy it all at once. And we really would like to get the packs purchased at a similar timeframe so that, you know, they are of the same, you know, generation. They're the the same functionality. And so we're kind of, in the grant, we were hoping to get, we wanted to get twenty, because we have twenty-four people in the apartment. But we're gonna, we think fifteen is kind of bare minimum. Thirteen is what we need to outfit our two trucks. Thirteen, fifteen is really close, so we said, let's go for fifteen.
So I I'd like to tell you what you proposed, but I think I'll throw out for discussion because that's what we're talking about here. So what would happen if you took um the Relief Association gambling funds and bought the first five packs, ten bottles, and five masks? Because I don't believe you have forty-four thousand in today, in this year's budget, twenty twenty-four, to do any purchasing. I'm guessing. Because you're using part of it to pay for the compressor. Twenty-two thousand. So there's, that takes that out. So if you were if you were to request a Relief Association to pay for the first five packs, ten bottles, and five masks, and then, and in the twenty twenty-five budget, I don't um, that probably that forty forty-four, forty-two thousand is probably not in the twenty twenty-five budget either.
Or no, no, like I said, this is an unplanned expense. So is it a budget expense? Could be a CFP pass. Do we go out and get a a lease or a bond, you know, for it? Again, this was just one idea. There might be other ways to purchase this, you know, larger expense thing.
So I have some questions. So why do we need to do a joint cooperative purchasing?
So that's what the vendor gave us so that we get, we get pre-bid pricing for the packs. So everybody in the state gets the same.
But it's not required here, right? Because the the value of the contract's not a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. It's only about a hundred thousand, ninety, ninety-something. Right? So we wouldn't have to do that.
Players gave us that letter for the for the joint powers.
And then, and then the second question I have is um where is the agreement? So the resolution you prepared references an agreement. This agreement has to make available. Is there an agreement to?
Catch fifty-two of one forty-six is the.
Fifty-two.
Hmm.
That's the resolution.
That's the resolution.
Where is the agreement? That the resolution's.
I can think of it as a packet. It was all given.
Hey, we can ask. That's all. I I wondered what I was given.
Yeah, I'm I'm I looked at this beforehand. I figured there was something to it or it would be supplemented, but you know, I don't think we should approve a resolution attached agreement without the agreement. Where is the agreement? So it's a, it's not in here. So the intent of this agreement is made of purchase firefighter self-containing breathing apparatus. Um, which cooperative purchasing alliance are you using? Is it one of the main ones that?
J J P A, that's on it. J P A.
Okay, what's what's that one? You know, what that stands for? Man, I've dealt with the number of them over the years, but I.
I'll pay you. Okay, I, we can go back. I just, I forwarded what I had received. So the vendor's saying, hey, give this to the city council to join this cooperative to get pre-bid pricing. So I'll ask about the agreements.
Yeah, J P A just stands for Joint Purchasing Alliance. That's the statutory or joint powers agreement. I mean, that's in the statute, but typically, there's a couple of, like, if you're gonna buy a fire truck, for example, there's a couple of companies in the United States that do that and that's, that's the one where it makes a lot of sense to me because you're buying used, right? You're buying like a used fire truck and then they can do a nationwide search for you and give you the best price. This, I'm not, I mean, I, I'm not saying not to do it. I'm just bringing up the fact that this kind of seems like stuff you could just go buy, right? I mean, aren't we paying this, but purchasing alliance, don't they get a fee? And, you know, when you're buying a million-dollar fire truck, you want to get the best price on the fire truck, right? If you're buying ninety-six thousand dollars worth of small equipment, you know, have you, have you looked into just buying it on the market?
I mean, this is the local vendor that sells Scott air packs and so I'm sorry if I I don't know how to answer your question.
Well, I guess.
He said, here, you need this to get the best pricing for what he's selling. I maybe I didn't know what I I should ask.
Who is it? Like where?
It's Claris, safe, fire safety, Claris, safety equipment here in Rochester.
I guess on page fifty.
Fifty, yeah.
Forty-nine and fifty is uh check bid in this case.
So they are the, they are the Scott brand distributor.
I see, okay. So they've already given you the quote?
Yes, and I sent it as kind of an example of if I buy ten or I buy twenty, it's the same price. We had asked if we get a discount if we went in with other departments and they're like, no.
I see. So you already know the price of this?
Yes.
Gotcha. Okay. Yeah, I still, I mean, you don't have to do, unless they require you to sign this joint purchasing agreement.
Okay, I can ask that.
Because it, because I mean, it wouldn't, the statute wouldn't require it here. I don't.
Okay, I thought it benefited us to join.
Well, it might. It might. I guess that's a question I would ask them. It's like, what are their, what are their fees and, but, you know, why can't, if it's under the statutory threshold for competitive bidding, why can't we just go negotiate and and buy this stuff at this price? And maybe we can, maybe we can't. I don't know.
The thing is, purchasing. Local fire departments are using, we're not doing this on our own.
No, I'm not saying.
Signed it.
Yeah.
Hunt Island signed it, Byron signed it, Kasten signed it.
And I'm not saying not to do it. I'm just saying, why do you need to sign an agreement?
Quick question. I mean, I'm glad to ask.
Yeah, is it need, they they need an agreement because the statute doesn't require an agreement. If they have, you you can only get this price if you sign the agreement and that's what they say, then I understand. That that makes sense.
Okay.
Yeah, but yeah, otherwise it's fine. I mean, but there's no agreement here.
So what kind of lead time are there with these new waters? Your place to order.
Lead time for the packs? Ten weeks, ten weeks.
How many?
Ten.
Ten weeks?
Ten weeks.
So right now, you won't have anything for one January.
That's correct. That's why we have, as I mentioned, some rental bottles that in there.
What do rental bottles cost at you?
Fifty bucks a month or? Oh, one time, right? Five, fifty dollars per pack. One time. So it's, it's a reasonable cost. And we're gonna transition that shortly. While, we figured this would take some time.
But you still need the compressor first because you can't fill those bottles.
They're two separate things.
Right, so that's, that's gotta go to be able to get that thing care of, so.
I I need a, I need, replace the failed compressor so I can fill the bottles and then, of course, I need packs of bottles to wear. So there are two things, but unfortunately, they kind of came together at the same time.
Do we know the lead time on the compressor?
That was also weeks. For the compressor, the compressor would be three months, three months.
And there's no fixing?
No, yeah, so we've been maintaining it. We've been, you know, repairing it as needed and now Fire Safety, which is a different company, has said it's broke. Do not put any more money into it. And that, you know, that's when we got the quotes. We thought fourteen for refurbished, fifteen for a brand-new compressor plus installation allows us to use the bottles that we have. We have three six-thousand P S I bottles and we have a fill station. We can reuse all of that. So one of the quotes, I think you saw, was for fifty, sixty thousand. I mean, that was for a whole fill station, which we don't need. We just need the compressor.
Yeah, and breathing the air, if you have a bad compressor that goes along with it being a scuba diver, is not friendly. Well, you know what?
Right now, it's not even just bad air. Right now, we have no air.
Yeah.
So it might be that 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 quote is all you get. The resolution is the agreement. That could be it. I don't know. But you don't need this approved tonight, do you? Or do you need it approved tonight?
No, I I, I think we're we're at that this month and next month. I mean, as soon as, you know, better than later. But I I will ask the uh, Claris Safety for clarification.
What does, what does it take to order? Does it have to have, do you have to pay it upfront or how does that work for?
No payment upfront.
No payment?
No payment upfront.
You just order it and then payment upon delivery then?
Yes.
Could you go back to the numbers that you mentioned as, are you, with the two engines? How many packs did it?
So for us to have.
Minimum, I guess.
Yes, for our, for NFPA, seated positions, staff on the vehicles, for our engine one and engine two that we have, it'd be thirteen. Would be the minimum. And so we just, we have fifteen today. We said, let's shoot for fifteen because I think it was this couple extra packs that people are gonna have for training. So instead of asking for thirteen, which seems like an odd number, we said fifteen.
Thirteen packs.
Thirteen packs, two bottles a pack. It's kind of the minimum.
So if you look at twenty-six bottles. Thirteen packs.
Yep.
So there is something, by spreading it up between twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five, I believe there is, you can stagger that thirteen. Is that what I'm hearing? So that you could use just, say, seven initially, or whatever that number is, something less than thirteen because you're asking for fifteen only. A two-year period.
That's, that's, that's total, I think, perhaps. They want a total of fifteen.
We were trying to have one purchase that potentially span, maybe since right here at the end of the year, a couple of budget cycles so that we can make one order, have it come in next year, and then make a payment with funds. And that was just such a suggestion on how to pay for this.
Pay part now and then.
We don't pay anything until we get.
But you're just dedicated to be paid for for next year when it come in from the the twenty twenty-four funds.
And you're right, you know, what we have left in twenty twenty-four.
Right.
But is, you know, there are other sources of funding? Should we pursue a different way to purchase them?
But right now, your only source of funding is really through the Relief Association.
We had no planned budget, so yes.
Yes.
So right now, it's our equipment fund that we've been holding.
Right.
You know, is, luckily, we have some money there, but we were not prepared for this large expense. So you're right, I will not.
Bridging that with the budgets of I'm not sure what twenty twenty-five budget's like, but I doubt we did have an extra forty-two thousand because it wasn't planned, so.
We don't.
So it's a double whammy of what we don't have.
But I think they're also trying to contribute whatever they can also as a relief, which is trying to help, you know, with the burden that there is. So trying not to, to hit the city with everything, but, but try to participate in the expense as well.
It's nice, well, it's nice they wrote the grant in two thousand nine hundred and puts us over a barrel and they all come do it at the same time.
Right.
Like I said, we knew about the bottles. I was not prepared for the packs. And of course, I'm also not prepared for the compressor to, you know, decide.
Yeah, I think I remember you mentioned before that the bottles were coming due, so.
Yeah, you have to hydro test them every five years and then you get fifteen. And the, our thinking is the manufacturers just want to sell more bottles. So that's why there's this fifteen-year life. We don't think, you could probably hydro test them forever and they'd still be good, but again, back to the legality. I don't want to be running a pack that technically, people tell me I should not be using.
Can you stagger the amount that you buy at a time so that they all don't go out at the same time?
Well, you're, you're right now in a situation where they're all gone. So you gotta do it.
Cause you buy them at the same time.
I, I think that looking down the road in the future, you know, because there are different expenditures like this, it might be a good idea to kind of have. A fireman CIP fund that, that is kind of just isolated for what the fire department has to be able to plan in, in advance to this stuff. And I think we got caught with a lot of things. We were kicking the can and the can finally hit the bottom and, and that was with the truck and also with this that. You know, these things just happen, but that's a way to plan in advance to set something like that up so that we've got it looking ahead for what needs to be replaced.
But that, and it wouldn't, that, and it wouldn't, it also wouldn't hurt halfway through this fifteen-year cycle is to order a set then.
Right.
That's where you get into the planning with your budget where it's gonna be something that's an automatic update included in your budget. You don't need a separate CIP necessarily.
No, but I'm just trying to, yeah, figure out how to do that. But it's just a way to kind of isolate it to make sure that it could be done that way.
How much is the fire relief talked about putting forward to help cover the costs?
Uh, it was forty-two thousand.
We could probably, you know, go up a little bit. We're gonna meet tomorrow night and see how much we exactly have.
Forty-two with that one, it doesn't, we have to figure out what we're gonna do with the compressor.
Yeah, they're separate.
Yeah, because that's seventeen or whatever, twenty, let's say, because you have to install it, right? So. Is that about right, Joe?
Yes, it was like seventeen for the compressor plus, let's say, three to install it. So we're about twenty.
So, so potentially the, if we reallocate, read the journal entry for the air packs for this year into a compressor. Um, that would cover that cost and then for this year's packs that are listed here, twenty twenty-four, around forty-four thousand, the fire relief would cover the cost of those.
Yes.
About forty-four, are you gonna do more? Because you have down here is forty-two, but you wanna do forty-four?
I'm just looking at their estimate for a cost for this year that the fire relief would make up that.
We're in that, yeah.
The ballpark.
Yep.
Cause I have concerns with the budget. So, you know, from, from our end where we're at, you know, we have money remaining, if you will, budgets are tricky and, and. But all that money is assigned to certain line items. You can't just say, oh, we're gonna, you know, we've got this pool of money we're gonna take from here and here and here. No. When you do taxes, the citizens expect that, that money's gonna be allocated for those expenses. So changing those expenses is a big deal. Um, and then you get into the fact that the fire department has used. This year from our four twenty-five account, a hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars for various, uh, vehicle maintenance upgrades and things like that. Um, that's also a concern, especially when I know, speaking with our finance advisor, that that was not supposed to be touched because of the water sewer project. So we need to talk about the budget and where that's all coming from, especially going into twenty twenty-five. So we need to make sure we sit down and do that.
Thanks for the update and, um. It's unfortunate the grant money didn't come through and, uh, but we have the challenge ahead of us and if you want to follow up on the agreement and, um, maybe come back at the December meeting.
Do you wanna wait till December to talk about, you know, using that money, budgeted money for the compressor and, you know, separate discussion for that?
Well, I think we need to have our, our budget workshops, see where we're at for twenty twenty-five. We don't think we can really comment on that tonight, but.
So we're gonna have to sit down before that to, to work on this. We can come to the council and be prepared with how that's laid out and what it's gonna look like and where that money will come from.
Okay.
So we'll hold off on the, uh, agreement or do we, until we get an agreement to go with the resolution?
Well, just ask them if they have, if they have an agreement. If they don't, if they just need the resolution and the quote, if they have a quote in there, then I will call and quote it. That's all we get. I mean, I think in the past, when we did the fire truck, we had an agreement. I'm not certain of it because I reviewed it and marked it up. So, and this isn't a huge amount of money, but, you know.
Yeah, I will talk to them.
There is, there is that. I mean, I, I think if we're approving, I think the resolution, it didn't really specifically attach the agreement, but it referenced the agreement. Um, is, and that's their standard resolution that all these cities are using, I'm sure, right?
But you do have the money in the fund, in the fire relief fund for the compressor, is that what you're saying?
We have some money in our, in our equipment fund at, at the relief to pay for something.
So will it cover the compressor?
I mean, it would cover the compressor, but it wouldn't cover the packs. And so we were hoping that this line item that was gonna cover. A compressor and packs could be repurposed for the compressor and then we could throw all of our money then toward packs.
I guess I'm more concerned about getting, getting it, getting it on order and not waiting another month and, you know, and now we're four months out before you get, even get a compressor. Because I'd like to see you at least get the compressors on order. That, that's kind of my thought, but. I'd like to, I'd like to see, I'd like to see the compressor get ordered.
Mm-hmm, I would too.
That way, that way it's in place.
To approve that fundager, um, for the compressor and do that out of their budget and then we can figure out the remainder cost between the fire relief and the city with the SCBA that was budgeted for twenty twenty-four.
So maybe ask them that too. If you, if you kind of bifurcate the two things, do you still get the same price if you order them in two separate? Does that make sense? If you order the compressor, you know?
So the, the, from my understanding, this, the, the resolution was just for the packs.
Right, okay.
Compressor, compressor is the compressor price. And they are, they already are separate.
And you're not going through a JPA for that? Gotcha.
That's just the compressor part.
I understand.
So I need to, do I need to make a motion to take order, and order that or how is that?
That's fire relief.
But if I'm paying for it, I'll, I'll bring it up in front of my meeting.
Yeah, well, that's just fire relief.
Okay.
Send me a, that's.
Get your, get your searches. Different meeting.
Fire relief, because they're on separate entity, they make their own, they've got their own finances and budget. So they, they can make their own decisions on what they wanna spend with that.
So as far as the resolution goes for the, um, agreement. Should we wait for that or approve it pending a copy of the agreement?
Wait.
Wait, you said?
That's my recommendation, I think.
All right, we'll do that.
Have a.
I, another item on the, uh, fire department was an update of the monthly minutes and the consent agenda.
Yes, yeah, that's last month's minutes. Yeah, it's last month's minutes.
Payroll. Is that, uh?
Yeah, we have fire and first responder payroll. That's something you approve.
We'll make a motion. We approve the annual payroll for the fire department.
Second.
So it was open, no? Any other comments here?
Uh, I, we have a question about payroll stuff. So we're trying to figure out and we can't, uh, maybe you can help us find this when it was discussed, because this is pretty my time here. About the rate for the fire and first responders, um, when that was discussed and where that was talked about. Cause right now we have a city ordinance that spells out what the rate is. And so unless that city ordinance has changed, that is what the rate is. Um, so we wanna make sure we got that right, but I, we can't find anything that talks about a new rate. Um, but Renee did say that she remembered something coming up.
And we discussed it last.
But.
Yeah, we discussed it last year when we were going through because.
Was there an ordinance change?
I don't know if they officially did an ordinance change as we were going through different things, but they went out and got competitive bids that there were from other communities that there were around. Looking at, at what those rates should be. And that's when we had agreed upon at that time. And I can look back through, but it was brought up and it was discussed.
So, yeah, in the, last year we had at least six meetings where we were talking about changes to our budget. One of them being the amount per call going from ten to fifteen and then the salaries of, you know, people. And when we, we said this would be, it reflected the city code, they said it would be, it'd be reflected in code because you guys were updating the code. You're right, we've been also waiting to have it updated because it still says ten, it still has the old pay, but the new pay took effect in January.
No, that, that was, that was agreed on, so.
Okay, Mike, legal, I mean, where does this fall?
I don't understand.
So they've got in city code, they've got it laid out as to what the pay is for first responders and fire department. Uh, and there was, a discussion had to increase the pay rate for this year, but nothing was ever, the ordinance wasn't amended. So I don't know how that.
I'm not sure. I'm not sure. I'm, is that? Um, I'm not sure if it's normal to actually set the pay in ordinance or if it should just be repealed and you should set the pay. And this is for on-call fire staff.
Yeah, and first responders.
Which I, I'm kind of in the same mindset. I've never seen it like that before, but I do know what's in there. That's why I'm, I never researched the issue. So I guess I would. Clarification, I mean.
Cause we had voted on it last year when it played a council and everything, all that done. So it was all done. So it's gotta be in the minutes of, of the council that there was at that time. Cause that was all, all approved.
Yeah, I mean, I suppose if you pay people more than once in the ordinance, you just do that.
Yeah, and that's fine. I just wanna make sure that we're okay with that, so.
Well, I think you should change the ordinance, right?
Well, yeah, I.
One way or another, whatever it says, I don't think you should violate the ordinance, but without looking at it, that's all I can say. So if it has to be done tonight. I mean, I, I don't know what to say.
Well, we gotta, we gotta get it out. So I just wanna make sure that, you know, we're fine paying them the, the rate that was agreed upon. So it's just a matter of if, if you can find that.
Yeah, I'll go back to that.
Yeah, if you got it written somewhere, we can't find it anywhere. And that's pretty my time. So I'd appreciate that. Just shoot, Renee and myself an email with that rate. That way we can get the correct payment for you guys.
Well, the fire department probably has that on hand too, don't they?
Well, I mean.
A copy of that.
So what we have is, well, you know, the budget that was approved in December had our increase of our salaries would broke down. We're going from ten to fifteen and these officers now are at this pay. So, yeah, that, that's easy documentation to prove.
Probably be easy documentation.
Sounds like what happened is it was never updated or reflected anywhere else. And again, it was told that it's because you guys were going through your city code, you were gonna update it and that's when it would get updated.
Well, there was also a time where we had different administrators that were in there at that time and there was a point where we were minus an administrator. So some of those things could have just fallen through the, the cracks before we got in there and did, did the other. Cause she came in, I think in December, when Shirley came in. It was like the first part of December, but it was after the budget had already been agreed on and approved. Well, we did the final budget, but everything else had been approved up by Sunny. Cause we were doing that in June and July.
You have to not.
Over, so that was already done, except, yeah.
Yeah, I think Shirley came on mid-December maybe.
So that could be the reason why Jason offered that stuff of what happened, so.
Well, we'll look back at that part two and then if you do find it, ten, we'll verify. I just wanna double verify, make sure we got the rate stopped. So we're making the right payments out.
Yeah, I tried to, there was a spreadsheet I updated with all the new values, so it should be pretty intuitive for you to see.
Was that something you made or was that something?
It's not my name.
No, the, 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 the pay amounts for your guys, was that?
Oh, that started with Sunny and that guy.
That was all done, yeah.
Okay. I just trying to understand. Yeah, yeah, this is just my way of, yeah, pulling it up.
Go ahead and approve what's been the agenda for this year.
Yeah.
Their motion then.
So I need to make our motion or have it been done or? I'll make a motion to approve that.
No, it's already been done.
Okay.
They made a motion you seconded, it's still gonna vote.
Any other comments with the fire department, or the payroll? Getting done, hold those in favor. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. First responders.
Yeah, thanks.
The monthly minutes or the packet?
And, um, same thing.
Yeah, yeah, payroll increase in total.
Yes, and fifteen thousand, twenty-one thousand, five sixty, so it's quite a jump in training costs.
So again, with the increase in our, you know, per run calls and our increase in calls itself, the board members and the increase in the salaries. You know, we did our best to, yeah, so we went, I think we went from seven or eight to fifteen, but obviously we didn't find out.
That also brings up a question on, on this for the first responders. Um, are we gonna get an increase out of, uh, uh, the township on that and get something firm on that one, Jason?
Um, we're still working on it. So they went in and they're gonna be starting their budget stuff. Um, what they do there is in April.
Do you have a proposal of what you were asking for, for them?
Uh, yeah, we've worked on one and it's been sent to them.
Is that gonna make it so it's cost-effective for us?
Yeah, I think it was, what, twenty-four thousand? We s, it was roughly, it was the, the cost of coverage from what we had set down, looked at the numbers of what we were spending for it. So it was a break-even cost. It wasn't like a overcharge or anything like that. It was just to try to break even with.
I mean, that's bigger than where we were at before. I think we were what, at five thousand?
We're at eighty.
Eight thousand.
Eight for many years with no change.
Yeah.
And we got like fourteen out of them this year, which is nice, but it's based on them being eighty percent of our calls. We need to be more.
So with the, uh, first responders, I make a motion. We approve their annual payroll.
Second.
Any comments? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Next item is our EDA contract for twenty twenty-five. I make a motion. We approve the contract for twenty twenty-five, thirty-two thousand, one hundred and thirty-seven dollars.
Second it.
You know, I'm just, um, looking, looking at this and, and what's going on. I, you know, it would be my suggestion on this. Um, to take a closer look at, at, at the EDA or CDA. Um, I know that they did a good job on, on doing the, the report that, that there was on the survey for the city. I really appreciate that. They did a great job. Um, I'm just looking at, at, uh, what we're really getting out of it and, um, what's going on also with, with, uh, budget items and us looking at things. I would kind of like to, to put this off until, uh, the December, and stable this till December.
For what particular reason? I don't.
I just wanna go through the budgets and just see what we have and see what's going on. Uh, I think that that just makes sense for where we're at. And we're kind of putting everything else kind of with the fire department too, to go back through. But, um, I, I think that we should hold off on this until the December meeting.
And I do question, you know, what, what has been the return on our investment over the past year with the EDA? I know we had a survey, but beyond that, you know, what have we gotten with the EDA?
That's a good question. I thought there was some EDA minutes in there. But there are some things going on that EDA is, is working on is, but, um, we've, um. Gee, Rebecca applied for a grant for our, um, branding program from, um, Southeast Minnesota, I think was the ship. It's a ten thousand dollar grant that we've, uh, gone ahead and gone to look at branding of a work local, which is something we think we all need. Uh, we, in a position that we, we're growing. So I think that's a, that's a, a good first step. Um, we've also applied for a twenty-five thousand dollar grant to help with some paving, some paths. Uh, unfortunately, that we did not get that grant. Uh, they are working with age-friendly. Um, age-friendly is, um, uh, they've written a grant for eighty thousand dollars that will help with, uh, park assessments. Uh, also there's a housing study involved with that, uh, proposal. Um, and also there's a, a housing study and also, uh, which includes some senior housing. These are all studies that we're looking at bringing to the council for review. So there is, there is a lot of activity that, uh, EDA is proposed and doing. And I think that's, yes, we're just starting out. We're in our first year. Um, but at the same time, we've established our bylaws. We've, um, established an action plan. Our action plan is, uh, shared with age-friendly. Uh, addressing park amenities, buildings, um, setting up, um, social groups, working with our seniors group and expanding them. There's, I'm, I was surprised I didn't see the EDA minutes in the packet. I don't know if we didn't get it.
She didn't, she didn't provide any of that.
We didn't give them time. We didn't give it in time, okay. So there's, there is a lot of activity, and if you want to put it off to December, we can have Rebecca come to us, and she can share about an update for the council. Uh, Paul is on the E D A committee, do you have any other comments?
No, not really, you've seen what's, what we've been doing, they.
So, I, I think C D A brings a, a good service to us, uh, we're also proposing. Uh, E D A is also, E D A is also involved with, um, loans for new businesses, and so in our budget. We've talked about this in our workshop, of having a, a starter fund of fifteen thousand dollars. Uh, we can contribute fifteen thousand dollars every year into that, uh, revolving fund, that will help. As a transition loan for new businesses that would come into Orinoco. Um, it's not a, it's, it's a transition loan, um, mainly the pact is that they can take that. When a business comes in and they wanna go and talk to their banks for future money. This is an indicator that the city is interested in having them develop in Orinoco. And that's why they call them a transition loan, kinda transition them into bigger financing, so that's what E D A brings, E D A brings to us. And, uh, there's, there's.
At fifteen thousand, is that part of this thirty-two, Riley?
No, it's separate, it's in our, it's all part of our E D A development budget plan that we have, so. But those are all things that, you know, E D A is something that every city around us has had probably for thirty, forty years. We didn't have an E D A before because we didn't have a sewer program, sewer project, so we have that now, we have developers coming, we're here, there's more coming. And that's what E D A can offer those businesses as we develop, and I think they offer a very great service for the city of Orinoco. And to, uh, cut the legs off from underneath would be a very disservice to C D A, and also to the city and the taxpayers. The taxpayers are gonna grow from this benefit of E D A and what they can provide to the city with business opportunities, whether it's small or big. Um, they also monitor deed grants, deed grants, um, offer a lot of infrastructure grants. And so that's something that we could look forward, going forward, or maybe with some developers in the future, is to, uh, obtain one of these infrastructure grants. Some of those are matching, some are not matching, but they're hundreds of thousands of dollars that E D A can provide that guidance to get those funds. So they do provide a very willing service, and, uh, and by having a C D A contract, uh, that is, uh, what enables that. It's a, it's a modest investment for the city of Orinoco. Um, we talked about the hourly rate, they are here every eight hours, um, on Thursdays. Um, is the plan, she works remote from home as well, but she is here present, and people can come and talk to her, age-friendly's come and talk to her. Anybody can come, and she's always here on Thursday morning, Thursday afternoons and Thursday mornings, so. Um, it is a high rate, but at the same time, we're paying for her benefits and her salary too. So that's what goes into any professional organization that we purchase or services from, so. So I'd really like to see us continuing the way we're going with the approval of this, um. Uh, C D A grant contract, I think it's a very worthwhile, we've had it for several years. And, um, I think it's just, it's, it's the backbone of our E D A, and I think it's very important, so.
Well, I'll kinda go off that a little bit, with that, we're, we're not paying for her salary, her salary is way more than thirty-two thousand dollars, we're paying for. The, the knowledge and the, the backing of C D A, the, you know, the ability to, just like we do with any contractors, to use their. Their full establishment to look for grants, to bounce ideas off each other, you know, she puts in more than eight hours a week. She's someone that we can reach out to as staff and, and reference for things and ask for things, and, uh, no additional cost to us, so she is a. A tool and an asset to the staff as well. Um, so, uh, like I said, it's, it's a small cost to pay to, to have this, and like you spoke about with the. E D A getting up and going, and feel there's a lot that's been done in the short time that they've been around, and will only continue to benefit the community.
One other too, yes, she's here on Thursdays, and she covers, uh, I think three or four other cities. But at the same time, she draws from all of the C D organizations throughout Minnesota, Iowa, Illinois, and Wisconsin, so they can. Bounce ideas off all the other associates that work in the other town, so there's probably fifty, sixty other cities in that pool of. Information that she draws from, so that's another advantage that we have too, it's just not her doing it by herself, but she's working with her or. Her whole organization, so, and she brings that to the city, so.
Does she have a list of everything that she's got in the pipeline for Orinoco?
Yes, we have an action plan, uh, that's available, it's, uh, it's out on the Orinoco E D A website. And it identifies the different, all the different things that we wanna do, uh, over the next several years, and we have an action plan for twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six. Unfortunately, I didn't, didn't bring it with me, but if there is an action plan, we've spent time over the last year, um. With all the representatives, um, that are on that committee, so. So it's very well thought out, very projected or project-oriented and the results-oriented. And I think you're gonna benefit from that too, it's just that, this is the first, first, uh, eleven months, I think, so.
We're gonna start seeing some results.
We're gonna see more results, this branding program, uh, that branding program will, um. In the newsletter that's coming out here very shortly, she's be asking for community input, uh, people that wanna be involved with that branding program. And, uh, so we're, there's more city involvement, we did have our meeting list, or, uh, community engagement meeting last February, face-to-face at the fire hall.
Right.
And we've talked about having a, a follow-up, a face-to-face meeting with that, sharing those results. We've done an engagement survey, it's a multi-packet page, we've shared that with P and Z for the W S B. Uh, additional input into the planning program, so, uh, they have been a value service, and I just feel like that's just. Be very short-sighted of the city to consider not approving their contract.
Like I said, I would like to disable this till next month. I'd like to make a motion that we put this up till next month.
So, you're saying? Budget planning?
Yeah.
One question I would have, Riley, are there deadlines on some of these things? Some of these plans, like the branding?
Second, Jim.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Can you move your house second? I'm sorry, go ahead.
So are, are there deadlines on, on the branding project and? And, uh, you know, the age, well, the age-friendly grant, that's already written?
Yeah, submitted November the eighth, she did it within ten days of being requested to do it.
Okay. Bylaws, they came with her?
Uh, she developed those, without committee input. Yeah, I, I have no problem, you like it, though, I, I'm gonna ask Rebecca to join us for that meeting, and, uh, she can share more in-depth, and I'll share that with her on Thursday. Any other comments? With the C D A contract, I don't think there's a timeframe. Long to happen by the first of the year, we can share that with their president, it's been delayed. Any other comments? Any, I know all those in favor, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, aye. Through? Talk about that in December, December meeting. Parks and Trails, the next item, um, and your package is, um, Reservation. Twenty twenty-four dash thirty-eight.
Make a motion to accept that, it's.
Seconded.
The only way we're gonna get that fence put along.
That's right.
You seconded?
I seconded.
The only way we're gonna get that fence put along Highway fifty-two, have that, then I can port it into a purchased property.
Hey, and I did meet with them, and they showed us they staked where they're gonna put the art right-of-way fence, and it's gonna work very well with. The path under the bridges and plenty of space there, and they're all the right-of-way, and then. At both rivers from, um, they'll go up to the bridge abruptly, so it should be, that'll be, the plan is to have it done next year.
Would be great.
I'm sorry, I thought, I thought, I thought the plan was to have it done by twenty twenty-eight.
If they're gonna be.
It was recently, and now they've came back and said, you, you purchased the land by November twenty-ninth. They're gonna do it with the maintenance program, and now they're gonna do it with the contractor. And they'll come in next year and do that, so. That's a great start, so. Any other comments?
Nope.
Take a voice vote? All right, course, aye.
Counselor Phillips.
Aye.
Counselor Penegras.
Aye.
Counselor Richards.
Aye.
Counselor Zilmanek.
Aye.
It's approved? Let's see. We have a motion, I make a motion, we approve Jeff Manguson as a new Parks and Trails committee. Second that. Jeff's seen, uh, he was at the last Parks and Trails meeting, and, uh, she's pretty excited about joining the committee, so we appreciate that. There's no other comments, all those in favor, see if anybody's saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Through? Hey, um. There are a couple items that, uh, Jason, if you wanna respond to?
Yep, so I got the monthly memo that was put in there, big thing on that, we talked about, um. The change of the dates for the budget workshop to December, it's gonna be December. Uh, Counselor Richard has some other things come up, so, working with everybody, we were putting those forward. Um, looks like the fourth is probably not gonna work, cause there is a, another meeting, uh, an S E L M.
L M memo?
L S, yeah. Uh, meeting, so we're looking at the third and the fifth for the budget dates. So still sticking with that first week of December, those are gonna be the two dates, the third and the fifth. Any final issues with those dates, those work? Back somewhere. All right, um, memo in there about the holiday, um, next one is the update with the cannabis. Um, ordinance resolution, so again, uh, last meeting, we talked about. The cannabis and the, um, basically, looking at the county as. Um, delegating them to, uh, be responsible and have the authority for the administrative powers and. And resis- registration authority for cannabis within the city of Orinoco, again, that's the Olmsted County. Um. So we've got that, but we've also got in here, I wrote up an ordinance for cannabis. We don't really have that defined in our chapters, I know it was talked about having something in there, but nothing was officially added online that I could find. Um, we did find an old resolution that just had a definitions, so what you'll see here is with this. Um. Ordinance change basically went through, and at the top, you'll see an ordinance creating sections. One four three point zero three through, one four three point zero seven, and then amending, um, chapter one. Three four point zero one and point zero two, um, basically, it's updating the definitions. That we currently have to encompass more items, um. This was something that was, is used across kind of Olmsted County, this was provided by Rochester. Um, and it's kind of the, the template, if you will, that a lot of cities are using to help create their new ordinance. Um, this is just a, a draft of this, this is for your, everybody to kind of review and look at, if there's things you wanna amend or change, they need to be in there.
Right, one, one, one question, uh, I know this went to planning and zoning a year ago, or thirteen months ago. And I'm just kinda curious, has, have they come up with a place where this could actually be in Orinoco?
Yeah, what we did is just put everything on hold for, till, you know, actually, it was January twenty-five, which was a recommendation. That we had at that time.
Yeah, you did a, you did a.
Yeah.
Moratorium, I'm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it was just because nothing had really been developed yet by the state at that time, and so we were waiting for them to come up with, with something more that was specific off of that.
And, and this doesn't discuss the locations, this just talks about the usage and telling the amount of like businesses and.
I understand, I understand that part, but I just wondered if it's been on planning and zoning's agenda, so it's, it's to. As to where a state would be located.
Kinda waiting for everything to kinda take place.
I think it's important, I mean, I think that's a good, that's the main point here, is that. You know. There was a moratorium until, um, the state, the Office of Cannabis Management created their model ordinance. And then, so all the cities in this are waiting for this great model ordinance, and then I think Jason's ordinance here is based off the model ordinance, but. Cities can then pass specific regulations, for example, zoning regulations, like, you know, you, you might limit. Currently in your code, you probably limit what types of businesses can be in the R two zone. Probably something, if it's like most R two zones in Minnesota, it's probably like churches, schools. Um, gas stations and stuff like that, and so you could amend those. I mean, that's not what Jason's done here, and that's not the licensing piece of this, that's. The licensing piece is just so the county can issue licenses to cannabis retailers, you can adopt in your code zoning regulations, and you. I would recommend you consider doing it. Um, and I, I mean, I'm not guaranteeing, I mean, I think you can urgently restrict. The location of, of those businesses, I, you know, most cities are at least considering that. And many cities waited and are now asking us to do it, cause of January first is coming up, so. What I would suggest is you put it on, uh. Um, we have a lawyer at our firm that's kinda doing these for all the cities, because he's just very familiar with that at this point. And that we represent, so he's doing them for a number of my cities right now. So if you wanna take a look at that, I, I would recommend that, but that's not before the council tonight.
So what we could do too, and that one is, is maybe put out, uh, and extend the moratorium until we get a chance to go through everything legal.
You can't extend them, the moratorium was capped at January first in this.
Well, we could do another, if we wanted to or needed to do that, but. You know, I looked at this and everything kinda makes sense on what you put in this thing, Jason, I think you did a good job. You know, and, and the main thing I was looking at is, is the penalties, which is, uh, the one three four point oh seven. You know, and basically, it's restricting everything out of the, the public. Spotlight that there is, and of course, the penalty on that would be three hundred dollars, but it's our community service. But it's, it's, it's keeping everything private, not the public.
Yeah.
That's what I like to use, which is the main thing.
That's what most cities did, I mean, they eliminated in public parks and that stuff, the use, use restrictions on that, not, not sales, but use restrictions. So.
Sales is still at, at twelve thousand five hundred.
Right.
Constellation per.
Correct.
You know.
In the county. There's only so many licenses that'll be issued in the county. The license will be done by the county, but you can restrict, greatly restrict where they would go within the city, like you don't want cannabis retailers probably in an R one or R two zone.
No, I think that this is the stuff that would be coming up for W S B too, we just haven't quite got to the work that we're doing.
So this is one where you might want to, I mean, I. Well, it's up to you what you wanna do, if you wanna wait, that's done in March, but you don't know that's gonna be done in March, so this is one where you might want to. Do something. Now, sooner.
So would, would we do this, or wait for your gentleman to finish his stuff that he's got?
Well, nobody's asked us to do it for Orinoco yet, so we could do it.
Or do you wanna?
I mean, you could probably do it by December, if that's what you want, if you want.
Or do you wanna go with this one, Jason?
Well, okay, so we're, I think we're talking about two different things here.
Talking about two different.
So we're, the, the, the one that I'm talking about just lays out the general guidelines for cannabis in the city as far as use, location of use as far as like. You know, public, private, stuff like that, and gives definitions, penalties, things like that. Whereas he's talking about, okay, in the zoning side, restricting cannabis businesses to certain areas of town, certain districts, if you will. That's not something I have prepared, I would be more than happy to work with them to help get that prepared, I wasn't sure what W S B was doing.
Yeah, and again, we can ask in, in December, what's going on with W R C with that.
But the problem we'll run into is come January.
You get what?
You get, you get what you get, yeah, right?
I don't have anything in place, I mean, I don't think it would be a great. Task for us to do an ordinance amendment between now and January, if that's what you want.
But if, so I just, and I wanna, sorry, Mike, to interrupt, i- i- if we can get something put together. For, to go with this in December, cause this is just the draft of this one, I want you guys to review it. But if we get something to put together for December, cause I'm trying to think of a process, we need to have a public hearing for new ordinances.
Well, for land use ordinances, you do.
Okay, so for that one, we'd have to have the public hearing for that, so, I'm just.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think you need a public hearing for this. This is just like. Basically a nuisance ordinance.
No.
Yeah, no, I don't think you need a public hearing for this, I, I think you need to, you're gonna regulate how people use property that's. In the Planning Act, you have to have a public hearing, so why don't you just do a public, plan on a public hearing? Not adopt this tonight and just adopt everything.
Yeah, this wasn't gonna be adopted. Yeah, this wasn't gonna be adopted, and I was thinking that the public hearing would be at the next council meeting for the the one of the, yeah, so as soon as we get that, that'll be something that we'll send out to council to say, okay, here's this.
And I, I mean, what I'll do is I'll write an email right here, copy it to David, ASAP, is our attorney, and he he's all in hand at this at this point, so he can do it quicker than I can, and he'll put something together, he'll he'll meet with you to discuss what you want, to say, he'll tell you what the options are, and he'll just put put an amendment together for you to go along with this in December. And then you just need to notice a public hearing for December then.
I think you did a good job on putting this together, and I think you can.
So, but with that, there is a resolution, like I said, this memo kind of covered the delegating to Olmsted County and then the ordinance, so there's a resolution and that'll have to be.
So that one, I think you need to do sooner, because I think they've been asking, like for Yoda, my other, one of my other clients, Olmsted.
Yeah, that's why I have that on here, they get this tonight.
That we get it, if you want, if you want to opt into the county ordinance.
Yeah, which is what does kind of, everybody referenced that last month, is just letting the county and which is, everybody's kind of doing, from my understanding, I don't know of anybody that's taking that on themselves, so.
Yeah, I mean, most, even Rochester.
Rochester's doing like delegated to the county, that's it.
I I figured they would be the one that would do it, but they didn't.
With that, I make a motion, we approve Resolution twenty twenty four dash forty two.
That turns it over to the county, correct?
Any comments? Seeing done, we'll take the voice vote. Mayor Ikors.
Aye.
Council Phillips.
Aye.
Council Pendigras.
Aye.
Council Richards.
Aye.
Council DePomenech.
Aye.
It's approved. Next item is in regards to signatories.
Yep, so, as you see in my memo here, again, just going through all this budget stuff and everything floating around, it came to my attention of the state statutes that are laid out in the memo forty one or four twelve point two zero one, talks about every contract, conveyance, license, rather written instrument shall be executed on behalf of the city by the mayor and clerk with the corporate seal fixed, and only pursuant to authority from city council. Again, looking over this document with the State Auditor's Office, lawyers, making sure you had everything there. This does, you can see the letter that's attached from the Minnesota Office of the State Auditor. This is two thousand fourteen, talks about this as well. Basically states that the mayor should need, must be the signatory on see, I'm going back up here, on all contracts, conveyance, license, or other written instruments. So that's being put before you guys. As a resolution, I noticed it's not being done currently, I know there was a vote before my time. Again, just trying to correct this and get us into ordinance, excuse me, get us into what state law states.
Okay, I'm not so certain you're correct. You quoted a couple ordinances, or ordinances, I appreciate it, you, or statutes, appreciate your work you've done on that. But the four one two one seven one number says it's.
Which one are you talking about?
Your one seven one number. Says that it's repealed in nineteen. And it refers back to Minnesota statute nineteen eighty two. And it says, depart the council. And that, and that rattles off section number four one two one eleven, is amended to read the council may create such departments and advisory boards and appoint officers, employees, and agents for the city as deemed necessary for proper management and operation of city affairs. And I did some further research on the four one two two oh one. And I found that it says, if the city council revokes the mayor's signatory rights, the council would need to designate another official to execute and instruments on behalf of the city. Minnesota statute state two four one two two oh one requires that contracts, conveyance, licenses, and what you, what all you said, it says, in such a scenario, the council would likely pass a resolution or a pardon specifying who would assume the mayor's signatory responsibilities. This ensures that the executive execution of city documents remains valid and in compliance with legal requirements.
What are you reading from, Paul?
If you remember on this one, Mike, this was voted on and approved last December when you were at the meeting. What went on, and if you also look at some of the other sever factors that might lead to a mayor's signatory rights being revoked by the city council typically include, it could be misconduct, ethical violations, okay? And maybe revoke signatory rights because of that, the other one, loss of competence, the city council loses competence for the mayor's ability to perform their duties effectively, and they may decide to revoke signatory rights as a precautionary measure, and the other one is policy disagreements. Significant policy disagreements between the mayor and the city council can sometimes lead to revocation of the signatory rights, especially if the council believes that the mayor's actions are not in the best interests of the city. And we found that, and we took the signing ability to wave upon Ryland last December, and I think that that's where it should be.
I remember the, I remember it. But I didn't, I mean, I don't, what I told Jason when he asked me is I don't have an encyclopedic knowledge of every statute.
No, I'm just saying that that this is what it is, and the council voted on it, and that that still stands, and if it's up again, I make a motion that we keep it the way it is.
So I don't, I mean, I looked at this and that, I mean, did you guys read the Attorney General letter on that?
Yeah, but again, it depends upon what the city council votes on. And the city council's the one that runs the city on what goes on, and the council voted on that, so we put up to a vote against the city council.
Actually, it actually was an auditor's letter.
An auditor's letter, yeah.
The auditor's letter down it, it says, the the last, on the first page, last paragraph of the letter says, Minnesota law requires city checks to be signed by the mayor, clerk, and treasurer, footnote four. But note four says, see Minnesota statute four one two two seven one. Go back to been repealed, goes back to section, subsection nineteen eighty four, I believe it was, and it referred it back to four one two one eleven.
Yeah, well, I'm looking.
Gives the council the authority to do it.
I'm looking at it right now on state statute, it's not been repealed, that's where I had that question, I was trying to ask you. Because it's it's right here on the state website, it's not repealed, the statute's still there, so I don't know.
Yeah, which one do you say is repealed there?
With four twelve point two seven one dispersment.
That's where it said, pull it up off Minnesota state statute off my phone.
I'm looking at it right here on the.
But it says MS one ninety eight to repeal.
Four one two.
Well, the nineteen eighty three was re.
Oh, that's not right. That's not right.
Four one two one nine one also states that the council has the power to regulate its own procedures.
Well, I think what that means, though, is not not in contradiction to other statutes. I mean, I think the council can regulate their procedures and just say, we're not gonna follow any statutes, we're gonna regulate our own procedures based on that statute. Why have all these other statutes with all these other rules? I mean, I I just, I can't see it any other way, Jason asked me to look at this, and I just don't. Yeah, I don't, I don't think you can do that, I think the other statute that's involved here that I saw is the acting mayor statute, which is four twelve one two one. And that one, that one reads at its first meeting each year, the council shall choose an acting mayor from the council members, the acting mayor shall perform the duties of the mayor during the during the disability or absence of the mayor from the city, or in case of vacancy in the office of mayor until a successor has been appointed and qualifies. So I think you can, and then that Attorney General opinion up here, or the auditor opinion, I apologize, the auditor opinion references that statute, so I think you can do that, I just I mean, the other statute that says the mayor's got to sign the instruments, I just don't see how you can get around that. I mean, that's my opinion at least, unless unless you can convince me otherwise.
Apparently, we needed to make a resolution authorizing.
Which we can do off that, but again, that was something that that you approved on in last December when we did that, and I just I think it should absolutely stay the same way, and there's been no problem with with timing on getting anything signed that there has been since since that point in time since January.
Yeah, I mean, when I, you say I approved it, and I remember the meeting very specifically. And what happened was, one of the council members amended the meeting agenda to add an item called checks, and then the mayor asked, what does that mean, or what's it reference, and then no explanation was given. And at the very end of the four hour meeting, it was explained that the mayor illegally or allegedly illegally signed a check of some sort. And then.
That was requested not to sign.
But any opinion I give under those circumstances ain't no opinion. I mean, if you want me to really review something and research it, then you gotta tell me what's on the agenda, and I will research it and tell you what I think. So I I disagree with that analysis.
That was your ruling at that time, so.
Yeah, okay, fine, based on those circumstances, I'm changing.
So my ruling. Well, then, if that's the case, it's up for for a vote, so if we vote not to have it that way, then it remains the same, right? So what's left to vote?
I mean, I don't, I don't know about that, I guess I haven't thought.
I make a motion that everything stays the same of what it is, or we can be the the resolution that's here for twenty twenty four, I mean, like, which is twenty twenty four dash forty three.
The only comment I would say, I, Ryland?
You're not, you can't be a part of this.
You're, this is about you, you can, you're outside of the session.
Okay, unless it's put up to vote. All in favor?
I I mean, I'm not, I'm not that hell bent on this, I just think it's pretty clear cut, very, well, I mean, issue of law.
Well, whereas as a council, I think we are pretty much bent that that it stays where it is right now.
Well, I don't see if there's ever been any problems
No.
this year.
No, that's why I said I've been able to sign everything, if there isn't a very timely manner, there hasn't been once, that hasn't happened.
Well, I don't, I don't think that's necessarily the issue, I think the issue, the legal issue would be if you sign it and it violates a state statute, did the city really sign it? You know, is it an effective signature for the city?
I'm I'm enlisted as the affected signer that there is, absolutely, I've been doing it ever ever since, and I'm on there. So I'm the signatory one that there is, so absolutely.
Yeah, surely went through the paperwork, if I remember.
Absolutely.
Well, I mean, Jason asked me, and I said, well, if you think it's not legal to do it that way, and I reviewed it and didn't think it was legal to do it that way, then you should bring it to their attention, he's bringing it to your attention. If you decide to keep it the same, you decide to keep it the same.
The vote is there, and there's a second already on the floor on this one, Jason, you're not a part of the council.
I'm trying to get clarification for notes, please, I'm asking what the motion is, so I have it, because I have pre-designated motion in here, hopefully council will follow, and then vote how you will, but the motion was changed, so I want to make sure I have it documented correctly, so what was the motion?
The motion is to keep everything the way it is right now, that I'm the signatory for for the city, for the checks.
We've voted down his man.
Well, there hasn't been any kind of problems, but you're doing it, so.
Well, let's vote on that one.
Well, and I, the question, I guess I would have with that, is we are a statutory city. The mayor has no more authority than any council member, other than running the meetings and in states of emergency. So what would be the difference of the mayor signing versus a council-appointed designee?
The difference is, there's a statute that says you can't do that. I mean, why did, why did the legislature approve that statute? I don't know why they did, but they did. You know, so I guess that's all I can say, I didn't think it would be that controversial, I just thought it was a something where there was a vote made, I didn't, I wasn't aware of that statute, I was given no prior notice to research it, so the council did that. And that's fine, but now that I figured, we, you know, Jason figured it out, actually, so, you know, that's fine, I mean, if you want to keep it the same, I guess you're on notice, and I don't think that's, that you should do that.
So it's up for a vote?
So what, so a resolution would be drawn up to keep it the way it is.
We can do it that way, and we can do a new resolution, or we can just.
I don't think you need to do anything, I mean, you've already adopted the res, prior resolution.
Right.
So.
Yeah, there were two prior resolutions.
He's asking for, Jason's asking for a motion to adopt his resolution, if there's no motion to adopt the resolution, then then there, then it won't be adopted, right? I don't think you need to do anything.
Okay, let's leave it the same.
Any more discussion?
No.
We have all the brew reach for Craig, Jason?
I, yeah, I'm gonna have to watch this later and figure out then, yeah. We gotta figure it out.
All in favor, seeing probably saying aye?
Aye.
Pose? Same? Alright.
Who was the second for that motion, sorry?
I was.
Okay, thank you.
Side of his new business? Third item is Councilmember Phillips wishes to have request for proposal RFP, for a new city engineer company to get competitive quotes for a new city engineer, and to get competitive quotes for StanTech.
Yeah, it's been my understanding that it's it's been a number of years, and not saying anything negative about StanTech or what's going on, just for us to to keep track of what the competitive bids are. You know, so that's all I want to do, is just for us, and I think for what we need to have for a city. It's good just to to keep up with what's going on and know what's out there. So that's my request.
So it's a, it's a cost matter?
It's just, it's just to check, yeah, it's just to know what's going on, absolutely.
And I think too, back when Sonny was here, she had stated that the contract was so old.
Like two thousand and six.
Yeah, that the contract should be updated, it should be competitive, but I I agree, I don't I wouldn't say that Joe's doing a bad job. But, you know, I think the 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 contract definitely needs to be updated.
And and yeah, can just check this, you know, I think that's good for the city.
I think it's, it's been several years since we've had one, and yeah, StanTech's been here seventeen some years. Instrumental in getting us our sewer project working out for the last nine years.
Yeah, and and I.
So.
I agree with that, I mean, I just said, I think it's very smart for the city to do that, for us to do that.
Yeah, I'll try this one more time. You know, they've been here for seventeen years, and I think they've added a lot, brought a lot to the city, with our city, all the projects have been working on, especially the city sewer project. City sewer project is not complete. We have phase one B, that F E C A is asking us, when are you going to start phase one B? So there's like a tremendous amount of background that StanTech has brought to the city with design of the forty three million dollar project. Project itself has been under budget. The engineering services have been under budget. So there's a lot of good cost things that they have done in administering and monitoring and controlling and making sure the project's done correctly, so. I, it seems like it'd be difficult for a new company to come in and complete a sewer project that have no knowledge of the history of the town, whether it's projects, the, whatever we take. And maybe people recognize that too, and we won't get any quotes, I don't know, or we may get a lot. But I do know that there are opportunities to reduce costs, if that's a concern with StanTech. And that's, that's a very big possibility of redlining staff administration, if if the concern is we can work with StanTech and. StanTech and our city administrator to realign those costs in the contract. They have people there that could take care of the day-to-day activities under supervision from, um, from Joe, but that would help reduce the cost if the bills are concerned. But I do think that it would be a disservice to the citizens of Orinoco at this point. If we had our sewer project in place and it's been going great for five years, sure, I think that's a very good opportunity to, to go out and see what the, you know, the industry has to offer. But we're right in the middle of a sewer project. And to consider changing, I think would be a, would be very detrimental to the overall project. Not only the project itself, but the cost of the project, not having that background of, of how they connect to what we're doing today already with phase one A. So.
No, I, I, I understand your, your point that you're making, Ryland. And, and like I said, it, it wasn't that, that, you know, StanTech could very well find whatever it is and, and see what goes on, you know? But one B coming in for, for that part of it is just connecting with, with the sewer. The, the main part of the plant is already done. Um, I don't think it's as, as big of a deal as what there is to have somebody take a look. I think for the city, it's smart for us to have a competitive bid and, and see what's out there. I think that, that we owe that to our residents to be able to check that out.
Yeah, I, um,
on one way or the other, it's, uh-
Yeah, no, but I'm not saying that you won't, you won't get it. I mean, it's just, it's a matter, we, we've got it, we gotta do that. Otherwise, we're not doing a good job for the citizens here.
Well, I just, I, I just really concerned about the purpose of the, uh, the RFP. If it's, uh, if you're, you're not happy with, uh, the way StanTech has been operating or Fitzgerald or Staub for that matter. We as a council made that decision. We as, you know, we chose the lesser of the, the lesser cost. And, uh, and Joey explained that to us when we did it. So, um, you know.
I'm not, I'm not doubting any of those things at all. And, and you know how many water and sewer meetings that I've been to and watched the development of everything from the ground up of what's been going on. You know, that's, that's not what I'm, I'm questioning at all. And then I think that, that he's done a really good job. I think we just owe it to the, the residents of the city to take a look and just see what's out there.
This has more to do with like the budget, right?
Yeah, it's all a part of that, absolutely of, of, of what's, what's going on. But I'm just saying, it's all with, without us looking, we don't know. And, and I think that we're foolish not to look. You know, that's what I'm saying. And I, I think that we owe that to the citizens still.
Well, I don't, I'm not saying it's foolish not to look. I just think you're, you're developing a, um, a risky nature of affecting the taxpayers as well.
Well, I, again, it, it, it might work out that, that, you know, StanTech is in there and it, everything remains the same.
I'm sure they will provide some.
You know, so I mean, that's, that's, you know, there's, there's nothing wrong with, with having competitive, uh, looks. And it's been a long time since two thousand and six. I just think it's worthwhile for us to do that.
Well, there are professional organizations and all the other professional engineers and companies are all very competitive and, uh, you know, I think that's, that's, he's a while we're paying Joe for contracts that we have every year versus company A, B, C, uh, there's probably not going to be much difference. So I just, I think it's going to be, uh, an exercise that will, that has risk in it. And I don't think our taxpayers really should have to be dealing with that risk.
I think-
And having to deal with the M P C A to a timely manner of getting phase one B done.
Yeah, I won't go to one B because one B could be five, six, seven years out in the road. So I mean, that, that's, that's again, putting everybody in without taking a look. Um, I think that, uh, you know, again, if we have a discussion afterwards of what's going on when we're comparing what it is, that's one thing. But I think we're foolish not to our citizens. And I think most of them agreed that, that, that it's well worth, you know, just seeing what's out there. Otherwise, we're not doing what we should be. We're protecting our citizens and what the costs are.
What's the date for one B, Ryland, if you're talking?
Phase one B is the, the Northwest.
Yeah, but I mean, what's, what's the schedule?
Twenty thirty plus.
Schedule is that being completion by twenty thirty. That's five years from now.
You know, so, but that's-
That'd be- Go ahead, Joe.
Uh, just a couple of notes. There's more than, you know, we're obviously trying to finish the project up. So there's the completion of the construction, the completion of record plans, preparation of the final O N M manuals and then the agency's mittles. So honestly, to have somebody come in and take over that process at this point would be, would be very difficult. In terms of, um, the competitive environment, I completely understand that. Uh, engineering firms are competitive with one another. Rates are similar. Really what you pay for is experience. So if you want a lower hourly cost, somebody is going to give you somebody with less experience. And in some instances, that might well be fine. I have nearly twenty-nine years of experience. My hourly rate is high. I have, um, there, I bring value with that experience. Um, we have had some very large, successful projects. Over the last eleven years, I think we secured about thirty-eight and a half million dollars for Orinoco for the water project, the dam removal project and the wastewater project. And so in terms of engineering fees compared to the grants that we've secured, not even comparable. The thing that I would note that sometimes a change in face or the firm is good. Sometimes a lower qualified person can do the job just fine, especially when things aren't that complicated. While we're finishing out a very complicated project, I don't need to be reviewing driveway permits, um, at my hourly rate or doing development reviews or other things. We have other folks that could do that work. And I'd be happy to serve as a senior consultant and bring somebody like that in. You know, you could save, you know, a fairly significant amount having an engineer with, say, ten years of experience rather than nearly thirty years of experience. And if you'd want to talk about that, we could certainly sit down and talk about that. If you want to look at the terms and conditions of the contract, happy to do that with you. But to make that change at this state in the process where you're at today would be difficult for the city. And I agree, would introduce some risk. And then selfishly, from my perspective, when you do these types of things, proposals take a lot of effort. I mean, we'll spend five to ten thousand dollars on this type of proposal because everybody else will. We have some inherent value or inherent, um, advantages, given the seventeen years of experience and all of the stuff that we've done for you. You know, we know how things were designed. We know how they're supposed to be expanded, you know, or they were intended to be expanded. We know, um, a lot of information about how things were set up and intended to function and do function as well as having, you know, the history of what's happened over the last seventeen years. You know, I've been the city engineer through, you know, a half a dozen mayors and a half a dozen city administrators and probably a half a dozen, uh, public works directors. So I've been that kind of stable force and there's really value to that. Um, understanding that information and those pieces of the puzzle. So if indeed you do want to, um, reduce costs, well, why don't we sit down and see if there are some other staffing arrangements that would meet your needs and would reduce costs?
Well, you know, and, and again, you, you've done a wonderful job, Joe. There's no question about that. And, and the number of meetings that you and I have been in when, when it comes to doing stuff and and the way you've handled things and especially with the, the wastewater system that there is and everything that went along with it. There's no question about that. And so I'm not questioning your integrity or, or what you have. I think that, that your suggestion that you just brought forth on taking a look at that for a way for us to reduce costs is, is what I'm looking for, for us to take a look at. And so that makes sense, you know? I would, I would love to be able to do that and sit down. So with that in mind, um, I'll be more than happy to table this, okay? And for us to be able to take that time to take a look at that and see if we can't find a way to save costs for the city. Okay, and, and do a better job. That's, that's what we're, we're after.
Yeah, and I, and I personally, I, I would not be in favor of changing the horses in midstream. I mean, that's dangerous to the city. It's dangerous to this project.
So, yeah, I mean, that's-
I, and I, my personal opinion goes back to when Sunny was here, updating the contract and, and what you said, Joe, I think is, is perfect.
Yeah.
You know? Sit down and, okay, how can we reduce costs? I, we can't afford to lose you in the middle of this project. We can't, you know?
So, I mean, that, that's, you know-
All the knowledge of it and I, I wouldn't want to see that happen. But yeah, can we reduce costs by sitting down? Yeah, you would have, you'd be the one that would have those suggestions. And then, then the contract, you know, is updated.
Right.
You know?
Yeah, and, and that can be done too. You know, it's a contract from two thousand and six, but frankly, it's a simple contract. But, you know, we can work through that. We can get Mike involved. I'm happy to do that stuff and, and find, uh, uh, a place where we're still meeting the needs of the city and being cost effective, you know? And tru- truth be told, I, I don't want to, you know, I, I like to apply my experience to things that are challenging. Certain things are, are not, right? You, you understand that.
Oh, absolutely.
But at the same token, we've been, you know, really working together for a long time here and there's been a tremendous push to, to get through the project work that we have. And I think we've really done so together successfully.
Yeah, like, you know, again, I, there, there are no complaints off of that. Okay, never once. Okay? And, and you know, we work well together off of things. Okay? So it's not from that, you know? But I think that this is a good way for us to take a look at saving some costs, which I think is good for the city, you know, and for the residents of the city and still get what we need to have. So I'd love to, to sit down and do that. So.
So you changed your amendment?
Yeah, like I said, I'll put this, I'll table this one if we've got that direction of what we're going to go. You know, and, okay, and I think it's a smart way to go. And, and, and again, I think all of us can win in the end after doing that.
I agree. I will work with Jason to, uh, put some thoughts together on that. Maybe we can have a little work session or how would we do that?
Yeah, we can do it as a work session.
Yeah, work session would be the best way to do it.
Actress first of the year.
Well, yeah, you're not going to do this. We're not with that.
There, there's a lot going on. I get it. That's fine.
Yeah, so, but I mean, you can start working on it, but I think that with what we got with the budget, Jason's going to be pretty much swamped from there. So to put something else on his plate right now, like that, that wouldn't be fair for him, but.
So we have a motion to table this subject for further developments with the, all in favor, saying, probably saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. So I'm, and thank you, Joe, for the discussion. Alright. Councilmember Richards, you some, want to discuss something? Can we put a time limit on that for a timeout? Do you want to discuss?
Pardon?
You're, you had the next item to in, independent audit. I'm just asking if we can put a time limit on the discussion, not let it drag out. We still need to finish our-
Yeah, absolutely. Um, so, and, and actually this, this, there was some context based on Jason's email to me. But I, I, I wanted up for discussion. Um, we talked about it last year about having a, and I think believe even the previous year, about having a forensic audit in some areas. I would like to see a forensic audit in the time tracking, personnel time tracking. We heard from Linda King tonight. And I think we're losing trust or our citizens are losing trust in, in, uh, some of the financials. So I think as a council, we need to look at it and, and, uh, maybe every other year, pick a category and, and do some type of an audit. I know we talked about doing one before. We had a new city administrator in. So we, we zeroed out. But we didn't pick that discussion back up.
Didn't the last city administrator want a, some kind of an auditor? Somebody, somebody wanted an audit before they took over. Was that Geraldine or was that?
I mean, I should just be- Shirley mentioned it as well. So I guess I would like to know some thoughts of the rest of the council. I know these are expensive, so.
I was gonna, just to take off that, like I emailed you, my, my thoughts initially were okay. What, what specific area for an audit and you touched on that and then cost? You know, I have concern if this was discussed beforehand, the preliminary budget time would have been the time to decide that and that was never brought up. So I didn't know this was something that was prior discussed to me being here. So it makes it a lot harder to obviously try and figure it out for next year's budget. And they are expensive. So trying to figure out where that's coming from is a concern for me, obviously as a city administrator for the budget, just making sure that gets decided and all that. And then I can't remember what else I put in the email to you, Councilman. But those were kind of the, the top ones was figuring out what we're, what this was and then where the money was going to come for it, basically. So.
And I, and I know we do have audits and it, it's with our own accountants. But I look at that as if I was getting audited by the I R S, the I R S wouldn't say, I'm going to just take your word for it. I'm going to take your numbers and take your word for it. They're, they're independent. They're going to dig into it.
My understanding is those audits we have are in, considered independent audits. They are independent. Yeah, they don't work for us. We hire them to do the audit. So they are an independent audit. Um, and I know, again, something else I've been working on, if you've been able to plink around online, one of our updates to the website, there's a fine city finance section under city government. And I have put the last five years of the financial audits online. I'm working to get the budget stuff on there. Just been playing around, trying to figure out the website to do all this when I have time. But, you know, so we are putting those out there, but those are, you know, like I said, those are independent audits. So I was, that's a, that the other confusion I had is those, to my knowledge from, whatever I've been told is, those are independent audits. So.
As I understood it last year, Ryland had mentioned Smith and Schaefer. They, I think it's Smith and Schaefer's are, that they audit every year. And that was my point, that that'd be like me auditing my own taxes, you know? So if, if it is independent.
Yeah, because that's good.
Yeah.
Because that's what we pay, that's, that is what we pay them for is for that function. So that's, it makes it independent. It's not like we hire them, contract them, have them in-house working hours as an auditor for us. And then doing that, it's, that is what we contract with them.
Yeah, and this required by law.
Yeah.
Have to do an independent audit every year.
Yeah.
Cities have to do that. So I, I think if you want a further audit, you should contact the accountant. Maybe you, since you're the one who wants it, and explain to them what, what they're not doing that you would want.
Okay.
What, what you want and then quote a price because they might, or are you suggesting using a different company? Not.
As long as it's independent, that it's not our accountants auditing, auditing their own, you know what I'm saying?
Well, that's, yeah, I mean, that, and that's-
No, because we, we do all the work in-house and they audit the stuff that we do. We are our own accountants, if you will, and they audit everything that we do internally and, and it gets reviewed.
I think, I think it's important to, you make a good point. I do think it's important to get independent, but I think it's all good, also good just to understand exactly what Smith and Schaefer does. Because they will pull invoices and match them up against our records. They do the balancing of our, uh, end of month, uh, checking. And so they are involved, you know?
Well, and there might be things. I mean, because the statutes that require that require certain things. So they're doing a certain style of audit to meet the legal requirements. So you might want something more in-depth than what they're required to do and what they're doing. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
And so, I, you know, I think you're going to have to give them something though, if you want them to quota, do a proposal.
Yeah, do want a blank shot.
Yeah, I think, well, just, they're not going to be able to do a proposal of just a forensic audit. I mean, they're not going to know what that is. So like what? What, what, what do you want? Or maybe they have, maybe they do have optional services. And you can say, and, and they'll say, yeah, we do these sorts of things. This is what it costs. I know things, sorry.
City audits run from twenty to twenty-five thousand. So it's, that's just, you're basically city audit. So that's, that's just a
Is that what we-
A point in the sand, but that's-
Is that what we, is that what we base Smith and Schaefer each here?
It's about what I'm, I'm just trying to think.
It's expensive and that's just a very general audit. We're looking for forensic. I don't know what that involves, but it just sounds-
So there's other companies, I mean, other cities use other companies, not Smith and Schaefer. So there's other, I mean, there's other games in town. I mean, the cities I represent use five or four different companies. So you could ask them to, maybe they-
Would you have a list of those companies?
Yeah, I mean, you can, Jason can probably get that, no, no problem. Um, sure.
Or if you had, I mean, I, if you wanted to do some research, maybe you could do-
You know, the other thing I, I will miss- You know, the other thing I, I will mention too, that I think is, is very promising
No, tonight.
is the fact that we, we do have a new software system coming up.
Good for us to do that.
That will allow much better transparency, mu- much better tracking. But you know, and I know we've all heard of the fire department money. It's those types of things that, that the citizens question.
I've heard that fire department argument for so many years, it's just time to, to know what, what's going on with all of that.
Right.
And, and, and the, until the air is cleared on it with that in specific. It's gonna, it's gonna hang out there.
And I remember it, that was brought up when Sonny was here. And I, I believe it was said that, yes, it is, it's, 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 we have it, it, it's not gone, but she had to find where it was. Yes, and what? And I gotta believe it is. Um, and, and I don't know what the value, you know, what that dollar amount is, your own fire department.
Find what? We talked about it in July.
Yeah, there, there was some money that was out of there.
Yeah, this has always been a, a question that they had.
Yeah.
Uh, behind it and, and, you know, they've got some records, but again, it's, it's some of those things that, you know, and, and Jason, you and I talked about this too when you first came on, that it's something that I always wanted you to have to clean books that there are when you start, so that, that you know everything and nothing can be pointed back at you. You know, and I mean, I think that that might be a, an interesting place to start, is, is with the fire department, look at that one, you know, in particular and just, just see what, 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 what they find, I just, you know? Just might be interested, I think it might be well worth it, just to put that to bed and it's done, you know? So.
Well, Jason, I found a, there's a association that has a list of government auditors. The one that a lot of the cities around here use is Hawkins Ash and they're not actually listed here. But the other ones I, I've seen are Abdo and Baker Tilly, which is a big fancy firm.
It used to be our account.
Baker Tilly did, yeah, they have a large.
Smith and Schaefer.
Abdo and Baker Tilly or Abdo?
Abdo. And then separately Baker Tilly, and then Hawkins Ash, which is a Winona, uh, firm, and then I Bayley. Yeah, Baker Tilly, I Bayley, those are the two big gigantic, probably most expensive, and then Abdo.
Yeah, Baker Tilly's a nationwide, they're gonna be.
Yeah, so, so is I Bayley and then, um.
Your local one would be better.
Well, I think that, I mean, I think it's basically what you're using, Smith, Schaefer, I mean, I don't know if there's any other. And Hawkins Ash is in Winona, I think they, they have multiple offices, but they're just in Minnesota, so, but you can look at that, I'll send you this list, you can.
Okay.
I don't know. Um, yeah.
Well, let's.
That's all I have, I'll get with Jason.
So let's work and come back with something in a packet for next month. Of either more questions that you have, that you want direction on or, but, yeah. Okay. Thanks. Next item was an addition of the I work program, cost savings.
I have one question on that one. Oh, go ahead, you go and make a motion with that.
I'm just gonna make a motion to update the contract with I work with CMS.
Okay, uh, and, and, and I'll second that. Um, but I had a question with that one, um, and, and I works is great, you know, there's no question about it and I know the cost saving is there and I think that makes sense to do it and especially uh, being able to add a little bit more for the residents to be able to operate with. When we were looking at the new program that you guys got, was, was there a, uh, permission thing in the new program too?
For BSNA?
Yeah.
No, that's, that's focused on like internal budget.
Okay, because I thought that, that was the only question I had was, was off of that.
It's focused on that.
Okay, well, that, that answers that question, that was my whole thing, so. Make a motion to approve it.
No, I had, I made the motion.
Oh, Riley.
You're in second. Anybody in the discussion?
We do also have Tom here to discuss anything, if you have any questions.
This immediately then?
Yeah, we just have to work through the transition here.
Okay, okay.
There's different people, they're talking to each other, but it won't take long, we're just saying January one.
Super.
January one, okay.
All right. Any other comments? Be done, all those in favors, sign if I'm probably saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Next item, liquor license.
I'm making a motion to approve two sisters, um, that should be yes and go, a little bit of a typo off of that one.
One second. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm just gonna crack that right here, right now.
Like what?
Okay. When it's spelled correctly, it doesn't like.
Okay, and.
Other comments? Seeing done, all those in favor, sign if I'm probably saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Codes? Next item is a, uh, litigation planning process with the Olmsted County.
That's a tobacco license.
There's one more, there, there was the liquor was the first one?
Sorry, they were both in the same, they were supposed to be in the same motion.
Oh, okay.
Oh, they're all together, right? The next act, China was this, uh, Disaster Litigation Act of two thousand, Olmsted County Resolution twenty, twenty-four dash forty-one. Make a motion to approve that resolution.
I'll second it.
Good question on that one.
Sure.
Will we plan to do that?
What's that?
Are we done? The last mitigation, I was thinking the other one, that's the one that there is for the.
We're supposed to approve a plan, we haven't.
No, that was from two thousand, I think it's.
Twenty twenty-one.
Well, it said it act of two thousand.
It's in the first whereas, the top of the pair, resolution. It was established under the act of two thousand.
And I, to that point, I did look it up, it's a three hundred page document.
Yeah, I saw that.
To, uh, print that off, that's quite spending to print that off.
Little, seven copies?
Yeah.
Okay.
But it is available on the Olmsted County website, if anybody wants to go read it.
This is a plan that we work with them, we've worked with them again this year, we're closer to June with the FEMA.
Yeah.
It's all part of our Olmsted County as a whole. Any other comments? Do a voice vote?
Mayor Ray Course. Councilman Phillips.
Aye.
Councilman Penegras.
Aye.
Councilman Richards.
Aye.
Councilman Verlomenic.
Aye.
The next action item is Resolution twenty twenty-four dash forty-four. And this is a resolution to accept the coronavirus local fiscal recovery fund established under the American Rescue Plan Act in twenty nineteen, or twenty twenty. So we've been using this, the funds, we had a hundred and sixty-six thousand, six hundred and fifty-five dollars, so we started out in September of twenty twenty-one. And we're just finishing up the usage of that money. And the last three items in this resolution identifies a municipal wastewater treatment plant lettering on the outside of the building. The city hall community centered lettering on the outside of the building and inside hall door identifiers, which I think will be done soon. And then it also covers the, uh, transformer for the electronic message board on Lake Shady Avenue of seven hundred and twenty dollars, so. With this resolution, we've concluded in using our funds and so that'll be part of our report back to, uh, to the state, whenever that report is due. Documenting how we've used the money with all the resolutions that we have, including this one in place.
Okay, a quick question, where are the letters gonna be for the city hall, is that?
It's right on the wall up there now as you walk in, on the right.
Okay.
It's up on the wall above the flower path.
Above the flower, yeah.
I make a motion to.
Thank you, Jim. And, uh, he is working with, um, Chad Tracy on the wastewater treatment plant. Lettering and vehicle location, location, so.
Yeah, you also see we have a bunch of sticky notes on the doors around here, they came in. Um, and then I noticed that the signage was damaged, so I said we need to get that fixed and so they're fixing it, repairing it and you're gonna have new. But they noted everything so they can just come in and get it done, so hopefully those will be done soon.
Any other comments? Seeing done, go do a voice vote?
Mayor Ray Course.
Aye.
Councilor Phillips.
Aye.
Councilor Penegras.
Aye.
Councilor Richards.
Aye.
Councilor Verlomenic.
Aye.
Then I added an item, um, we have a one-page memo regarding a, uh, recommendation for candidate A for the, um, twenty twenty-four outstanding citizens award.
I'll second that.
Send Jim, that'll be presented at the December meeting. Any other comments, discussion? Seeing done, all in favor, sign if I'm probably saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Right. Lou?
That was first and Phillips your second.
Yeah.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Um, there was a couple, I wanted to go on for.
Second. Seconding.
Um, going through and, and looking at a couple items that were on here. On the general fund that, that there is, um, so looking at that for the total and, uh, this is on page one thirty-three. You can follow what's going on there. Um, government aid, if I'm looking at thirty-three, uh, six thirty-one. Are we still do some more money off of that or was there a difference off of that? Because I've got a hundred and forty-three thousand, six seventy-two for what we had for amended budget, we're getting a hundred and ten-four-seven.
Which shows for short thirty-three, two percent, would you say?
Yeah.
I'd have to go back and look into that.
I thought we got that one forty-three.
Yeah, no, I was just, you know, and so that popped out, I mean, property taxes too. Um, uh.
We have those in December, the second.
Okay, so that's, okay, that answers that question of what there is, so that will bring the difference on the total and we're pretty good off of that. Uh, engineering costs. Uh, we had budgeted twelve thousand or twenty-four thousand, three hundred. That's how I'm trying to figure out what that's about.
I'm sorry, where are we at?
Uh, that's item number three five oh seven nine.
Um, so that would mean that we have brought in over twelve thousand more for engineering.
Yeah, I'm just kinda wondering where that, where that came from.
I'm guessing permits and things like that, I don't know, I'd have to research.
Yeah, okay, I was just, you know, mentioning on, on that, the other one, let's see. Um, let's go over to page one thirty-five. Okay, I'm, I'm looking at legal fees, which is four two three oh five. We had budgeted twenty-seven thousand, five hundred, we're at fifty-four thousand, one sixty-six.
What number is that, four two three?
That's four two three oh five.
Wait a minute.
The page is not.
Uh, one thirty-five.
Don't see that number.
The number's been, most of your distance, not those only three hundred and forty-five dollars added to, I think just part of our, our development agreements, that type of thing.
No, I was just, you know, making note of, of some things that we are, as we're looking at the budgets and this kind of stuff too. So if you look at that, I brought up the legal services for the year instead of being ninety-one thousand, you know, three twenty-three. It's, uh, at, uh, one twenty-three, six thirty-one, so we're over one thirty-two thousand. Um, engineering fees on four two three oh three, same page. We have budgeted twelve thousand, we're at eighteen thousand, eight twenty.
I'm assuming that's a WSB payment that came out this year. Sixty-nine seventy-five?
I think that we.
For the month? I don't know, I just see.
Tell me, just, okay. I was looking at.
I have to look at that, I thought WSB had their own line item, but.
Those are planning services for everything that's been going on with planning and zoning.
Okay, fire department, looking at that and just comparing to what it was to their budget, if we had amended budget at a hundred and eighty-five thousand, seven thirty. Year-to-date actual, it shows a hundred and one, five eighteen. So if that's the case, then we should have some money, we got eighty-four thousand dollars left. Okay, and we're looking at, uh, getting close to the end of the year, so maybe we've got enough in there to be, take care of some of those packs, is what I was thinking about.
Um, well, with that, I don't, we do not have eighty-four thousand dollars, if you take out what they're looking at. Rough estimates, it's something I'll have to sit down with fire chief, but looking through everything, you're looking closer to fifty and then take into account the hundred and fifty they've spent in the four twenty-five account. Um, if we move any of those items over there, they're still over by a hundred thousand dollars in the fire department.
Okay, I mean, I'm, I'm just was, was going by what we had with the report, so.
And that's why I'm.
And I think it's good, this is kind of a worst way to talk to those guys and see what's going on, how we wanna do that. I think, I mean, we go, I think the shop is, is a little bit over here today, the actuals. But I don't know, we didn't get into the details exactly, trying to figure that one out, because we're at forty-two uh, thousand, one ninety-two, and this is on page one thirty-eight. And now your day actual is sixty-one thousand, eight twenty-six.
Just look at twenty-one thousand for salaries and wages that are taken out of there that weren't accounted for.
Okay, well, I mean, that's. Anyway, I just wanted to make note of, of a few of those things, so.
Yeah, if you have any questions, talk to staff before the meeting, they can help answer your questions too.
I just think it's good for the community to know too, what's going on, not just by text.
That's a good thing the packet's on the line, so residents can look at it as well. The one comment I would have is that P and Z committee meetings, minutes, you know? Been eleven months now, we haven't seen a P and Z meeting minutes on the agenda, the consent agenda. We talk about the items that come through, we don't have any meeting minutes. There's no history there. There's no history except for the motions. But whatever happens in P and Z, we never see it, the citizens never see it. Yes, we can go out and watch the videos, but I don't understand why P and Z doesn't designate a secretary to do the minutes, but more importantly, I really think that beginning of the first year, P and Z really needs to look at changing their dates of meetings as a suggestion to from the third Thursday or the second Thursday to the first Thursday for a little short months. You would never meet, um, the council packet due date. So you seriously need to look at that for the residents, so they know what's going on from the rest of the council. Parks, fire department, first responders, water and sewer, we all have our minutes done and P and Z's never done. And I'd really like to see that changed.
And, and I'll take some ownership of that, because we have gotten some done, I know they've been in some of the P and Z packets. Um, and just like you said, with the closeness of it and trying to turn around and get the council packet done, that's gotten slipped through by getting those from the, once they get approved at the meeting and getting into the packet, so that, that part, there are, like you said, there are a few out there, we just, they've slipped getting through, it would be nice to have a different date, but that's a discussion for a different thing, I just, let's finish that.
If it was moved to the first Thursday, you would have that time, your secretary would have time to get you the minutes before the council packet due date. I think it's something to consider, I know we talked about it once several years ago, but I think it's, um, something that we should seriously look at, uh, after the first year, so it just makes better sense in my opinion.
And Jason, that's the software.
Help with that.
Yeah. AI.
Yep. We've been getting some good trainings on it, we're, we're all moving forward, so.
It's in that new program?
Yeah, the diligence up, Renee and I had another training on it today. Yeah, the deal just up, Renee, and I had another training on it today, so it's
Pretty cool.
It's important, super excited, so.
All right. All right, um, we have a motion, any other comments with consent? Saying done, all those in favor, sign if I'd be saying aye?
Aye.
Before we adjourn, I'd like to thank Irv for joining us for a few months.
Well.
Appreciate you stepping forward, volunteering.
Whatever I could do, I guess.
We appreciate you being on our council, and thank you again.
Well, thank you, it was my pleasure.
Thanks, Irv.
Thank you.
Goodness, thanks, Irv.
I'll see you on some committees. Little opportunities, Irv.
You're saying no.
Well, I, I would.
I would, eventually. Whenever.
Hope you do. With that, I'm making a motion, meeting adjourned?
Second.
Dave?
Scotty? Henry?
Saying if I'd be saying aye?
Aye.